Now 5:02 PM, we will go ahead and take roll call, and then I will read the notice of the public meeting. Commissioner Galan.
President.
Commissioner Galan. Commissioner Galansky Pisaglia.
Neritha, we can barely hear you.
I can't, I can barely hear you all either.
Okay, we can hear you now.
Commissioner Tetra.
I'm here.
Commissioner Mungia? Not yet. Commissioner Nees?
I'm here.
And Mayor, you're here.
We're here.
Okay, I will go ahead and read the notice. Notice of Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Teleconference Open Meeting for Su- Chapter 551, Title V, Section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code, The Texas Open Meetings Act, Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville will conduct a regular meeting on Tuesday, June 16, 2020, at 5:00 PM via Zoom teleconference meeting by logging on on the website. Our meeting number is 859-302-394419. The password is 95820. This notice and meeting agenda was also posted online on the Agenda Center on the city's website. The members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting, they can go ahead and do so by calling in the phone numbers that we have available online. Okay, we will, we've already taken roll call. Next, we have the invocation. Pastor, are you on the line for the invocation?
Is there an issue with, was there an issue with invitation or anything? Because there's not a whole lot of people signed on, even individuals that may be commenting for public comments. So I'm wondering, was information accurate? Because Pastor Brad's usually on.
Yes, some of them are in the waiting room, sir.
Okay, well, can you check if Pastor Brad's in the waiting room?
Let me, let me have them check real quick.
I think Commissioner Galan's also in the waiting room.
I believe they just joined just now, so we're gonna let them in. Pastor Brad, are you in the meeting yet? If you are, we can't hear you.
He's muted.
Here we are.
Pastor Brad?
Yes, I just got on, sorry about that. It took me a while to get back from the VA. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your goodness and your glory. We thank you for your healing power. We thank you for your provision. And Lord God, we declare today that we need you for all of those things and more. We thank you also for your forgiveness. And Lord, we ask you to forgive us as a nation for our failures, and we ask you to help each of us to do better. We ask you to continue to heal us as a nation, bring us all closer to you, and therefore closer to each other. Lord God, we thank you for your wisdom and your leading, and help us all to follow you closely. We ask you to bless the mayor and city commissioners in this meeting today, that they will have the wisdom they need to do what's best for the city of Brownsville. We ask all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And now we'll have a short period of silence where we can all add our prayers to what's been spoken. Amen.
Amen. Next, we have the City Commission Agenda is the Proclaimations. Is Mr. Rodolfo and Josefina Solis on the line?
Doesn't look like it, Griselda, I'll go ahead and read it anyway. I think they may be watching, maybe on the screen.
Yes, sir.
So this is a proclamation recognizing and honoring Rodolfo and Josefina Solis. Whereas Rodolfo Solis is currently retired after having worked for 45 years as a heavy equipment operator, and Josefina Solis continues working after 43 years as a substitute teacher for the Brownsville Independent School District. And whereas Rodolfo and Josefina Solis are a substantial and influential couple of the community after having cared for 80 foster children in their home over the past 20 years. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Solis began their foster care with Child Protective Services 30 years ago, and were then recommended to enter foster care with the Bare Foundation of Child and Family Ministries, soon giving care to children through a World for Children nonprofit agency that provides fosters for abused and neglected children throughout the state of Texas. And whereas Rodolfo and Josefina Solis are recognized as inspirational foster parents who have selflessly given foster children meaningful and loving connections, as caring adults who provided support and familial bonds that continue to last through generations. And whereas the Solis family provides the city of Brownsville the opportunity to thank and support their tireless efforts as caregivers who welcome the responsibilities of providing a home to children who are in need of shelter, security, stability, love, and a family. And now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Rodolfo and Josefina Solis, and encourage the residents of Brownsville to celebrate their contributions to our community through advocacy for all children who are in need of a loving family. Done on this the 16th day of June 2020. So Rodolfo and Josefina, thank you so much for your efforts with foster children. Last month was actually Foster, I believe it was Foster Family Foster Children Month. We missed doing this last month, but I did want to recognize and take the time to recognize them for their work with foster children. So thank you very much if you're watching.
Next, we have the LGBTQ Pride Month Proclamation. If Mr. Brian Martinez, Joe Vallee, and Mr. Roy De Los Santos, are you all on the line?
Also, Griselda, I'm hearing that the task force is in the waiting room. They have not been let in. I think Albert is also there. I don't know.
I believe they were let in the meeting already, ma'am.
Okay.
And just for the record, Commissioner Galan is also in the meeting.
Yes, we saw. Thank you.
I don't see, I'm getting texts that they're in the task, they're in the waiting room. Is there any way that they can check that real quick before we start?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's gonna read that proclamation? Because I don't have a copy of it.
Commissioner, it should be you. I don't have a copy either.
I don't.
On the screen, but I don't, I just got a copy of the proclamation I read maybe 15 minutes ago in my city email.
Oh, boy, I'm gonna have to read off my computer.
I had sent it to you, we had sent it to you through email and a picture of the text, ma'am.
Okay, let me go ahead and open it then.
Hey, Griselda, for future, can we get these proclamations well ahead of time? Because we're not always checking our city email, especially in the afternoon right before meeting. That's the last thing I want to do is check emails. So can we get these sooner, please?
Yes.
Okay, I have it here, I have it. So this is really exciting. This is the second one that we do here at the city of Brownsville. We're the only city in the RGV that has ever proclaimed Pride Month. And we are also the only city that has a task force that has been making really great strides. I attended the last meeting they had very briefly, and it's so exciting to see so many prominent people from our community work so hard to make sure that the city is more inclusive and vibrant and making sure that everybody in the city is included in our city functions and gatherings. So without further ado, I would like to read this proclamation. Is everybody here?
Yeah.
We're all here? We're in?
Yes.
Hi, Albert. All right, okay. So forgive me if I stumble, because my phone is very small. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, Designating June 2020 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month. Whereas across the nation, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated in June as symbolic month in which LGBTQ community members and supporters come together for various celebrations of pride, including parades, workshops, concerts, and events to promote understanding, acceptance, and equality for its community. Whereas LG, I'm sorry, this alphabet is very small. LGBTQ Pride Month recognizes the impact of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer individuals have had in our history locally, nationally, and internationally. Whereas the city of Brownsville has a diverse and thriving LGBTQ community that actively contributes to the overall quality of life and culture in Brownsville. Whereas the LGBTQ individuals deserve to know the community stands beside them and live without fear of discrimination, harassment, and persecution regardless of their gender identity, sexual orientation, or gender expression. And whereas the city of Brownsville is strengthened by inclusion, justice, love for all, and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all of its residents. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the city of Brownsville, by the virtue of the authority vested of the Charter of the said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate June 2020 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and celebrate the great diversity of this city. Done on this 16th day of June 2020. Thanks. Does anybody want to say a few words?
I would just like to, good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Brian Martinez. I am the co-chair for the LGBTQ Task Force, and I just want to extend the gratitude of making this first step and taking the time to give us the resources and give us the time to listen to our needs and hear our proposals to begin working in the city. Just the thought of having these conversations is already enough validation that we're going down the right path. And being one of the first cities down here in South Texas doing so is so much more encouraging for us to continue doing so. So we've met about two times already. We do have our next, we're meeting next month during Pride Week here in Brownsville, during Brownsville Pride. So I encourage you all to come, join us on our board meeting on Thursday. But any other board members are welcome to say anything.
Is Joe on? I'd like to defer to Joe if he'd like to say anything.
Is he stuck in the waiting room?
While we wait for Joe, I just wanted to say briefly, thank you very much Commissioners and Mayor. It's been an honor to be appointed to this task force, and I really love getting to know my peers on here. This is truly a diverse group. You guys did an outstanding job in selecting your representatives, and I have no doubt we're gonna be able to achieve great things and make you all very proud. Thank you all for your confidence.
Joe says that he's muted. Can somebody unmute him?
Do we know which one it is, Commissioner?
Uh, he just didn't.
There it is. There it is.
Okay, hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, oh my God, thank you so much. Sorry about that. The tech was a little hard to figure out, but we're here. I just want to thank everybody from the Commission for helping us get to this point. I remember in 2017, we did the first iteration of a proclamation for Pride. As Commissioner Tetra mentioned, it was the first time in the Valley that something like this was acknowledged. And since then, it has been the only city, Brownsville's been the only city that has been able to do a proclamation. And so it's really exciting that we're here again. And now we're in the capacity of having a now functioning and hopefully thriving LGBTQ task force that, you know, yesterday we found out the news that the Supreme Court basically made it illegal to discriminate people from employment based on their gender or sexual orientation, which is really exciting, because we wanted to, in the long term, propose a non-discrimination ordinance to the city potentially that would protect citizens of Brownsville from that kind of discrimination in their employment. However, there are still many things that are not allowed, that there are still a lot of things that we, you know, take care of in terms of public discrimination and housing discrimination for queer and trans people in our community, because those are not protections that we have at the state level. But however, within the city, we can sort of try to find a solution that works for everybody. So hopefully with the task force, and Brian, and Roy, and Beto, and everybody, Norma, and Fish, and everybody that was appointed to this group, we are taking this very seriously, because this is just sort of about creating change, not just for us, but for everybody, right? And to show that Brownsville is a place that people don't have to run off to a big city to find their community, that we're here too, and that the city supports that. So I personally am very grateful for that, and also to say that Pride wouldn't be a thing without Black trans women who led the way and helped us open the door for the queer liberation movement. So I always acknowledge Sylvia Rura, Marsha P. Johnson, and all the people that came before us that opened the door for us to get to this point today. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks, everybody that commented, Roy and Brian. Thank you all for the work you're doing. I'm really proud of that task force. It's a great group, really, really. I know that y'all are putting in the work, and we're glad to put you to work. So thank you for everything you've done so far and everything you're gonna continue to do. So we appreciate it, not just Pride Month, but all year long.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we have Pride coming up next week.
Yes, I saw that. I think it's gonna be on Facebook, right? I would see if I can.
Yes, it's an all-digital Pride, June 22nd to June 26th. And we have really good surprises. We're actually partnering with the Brownsville Public Library. For the first time in the Rio Grande Valley, we'll have an authentic Dry Queen Story Hour. It'll be streamed on their Facebook page. So even the library is on board.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation, the Midi Foundation and Cultural District Report.
Hello, everybody. My name is Felipe Peña. I'm the Executive Director at the Children's Museum of Brownsville and the current Chairman of the Board for the Midi Cultural District. We really appreciate you all having us today and allowing us to present some of the current information that's going on and some updates. We're gonna start our presentation today with Dana Midi, with our opening statements. So I'm gonna let Dana take it over from here.
Okay. Are they muted possibly? Or, oh, there you are.
Sorry, I'm here.
All right.
Good evening, my name is Dana Midi. I'm the daughter-in-law.
Tell them to jump to slide four.
And if you can jump to slide four. Do you get that, Trey?
I did, but I'm not running the tech.
Oh, whoever's running the tech, it needs to go to slide four. But I'm gonna continue, go ahead. Good evening, my name is Dana Midi. I'm the daughter-in-law of Roy and Joanne Cole Midi. I've had the pleasure of being part of this family for over 30 years. I worked with Roy in property management for FIC Industries, and I was able to care for Roy and Joanne until their passing of 2007. Today, I am the Associate Director for Brownsville for the Midi Foundation. Roy and Joanne shared a dream with the people of Brownsville to develop the cultural district and support its growth. Their legacy, their dream, and the foundation was in jeopardy after their deaths. The family, my children, myself, and the Board of Directors of the foundation are dedicated to their legacy and their dream, which is about Brownsville and its culture. By the time RJ took over as President of the foundation, we had already been visiting Brownsville for several years and working with the Midi Cultural District. We believe in Brownsville, its potential, and want to lend whatever we can to achieve goals of Roy and Joanne in the Midi Cultural District, which is part of their legacy. As President of the foundation, RJ has adjusted the foundation's philanthropic work to include Brownsville to a much greater degree than before. To ensure we do these things the right way, we felt moving to Brownsville and being a full-time part of the community, his grandfather's hometown, was the best way to achieve this. We are currently leasing a home in District 4 and are actively looking at buying a home in the next few months. RJ was very close to his grandfather, and carrying out his legacy in a way that Roy would be proud of is top priority. It's not uncommon, however, that when you come into a community from outside, even if you have family ties, that people question their intentions. That is part of what today's presentation is about, making clear the work and the intentions of the Midi Cultural District and the Midi Foundation's role in helping them achieve their goals for Brownsville.
Hello, I am Khalid Malstad, Executive Director of the Midi Foundation. The foundation was established in 1996 as a private family foundation endowed by Roy and Joanne Midi. The endowment provides the sole source of revenue for operations and grant-making, as this is not a fundraising organization. Our founders were from Brownsville and Bertram, Texas, which explains the foundation's geographic focus. In 2007, as Dana mentioned, both founders passed away. And not unlike many family foundations, where founders understand the laws regarding separation of family and foundation wealth, the next generation doesn't always make that separation. This is the foundation. Attorney generals throughout the United States are not in the business of shutting down charitable organizations. They do work with troubled boards to correct errors and move forward. Such was the case with the Midi Foundation, and in August 2010, that case was closed. We've not had an issue since. As a matter of fact, the foundation has been used by the Texas Attorney General and others as a model to other foundations, and our policies are shared with other organizations across the sector. We're very proud of that. During that time of transition, the foundation's funding focus was narrowed to only Austin. In 2012, when RJ was elected to the Board, the expansion project back to South Texas began. The foundation board and staff spent three years reacquainting with the city and the people of Brownsville, specifically focused on the Midi Cultural District. In 2017, the Midi Foundation took a seat on the Midi Cultural District Board, and we began to look for property in the Midi to establish a permanent presence in the city. Those efforts expanded to include a focus to support the Midi Cultural District in its efforts to gain cultural designation with the Texas Commission on the Arts, inclusive of the Midi Cultural District organization's ability to accomplish self-sufficiency for the long term. The Midi Foundation's charitable use investments in Brownsville totaled nearly $5.9 million. Those investments include funding to the city of Brownsville for the Dean Porter Park renovation project, and to eight other organizations, six of which are located in the Midi. Those six will address their use of the Midi Foundation funds themselves. The remaining two organizations are the Brownsville Animal Defense Fund, providing support for readying 26 dogs for adoption under the requirements of the city, and the Brownsville Community Foundation, supporting the Big Give efforts. The Midi Foundation's commitment to Brownsville is strong. With the purchase of the property here, establishing a satellite foundation office here, adding a board member from Brownsville, the family relocating to Brownsville, and the executive director purchasing a second home in Brownsville, we are excited to be here. Thank you for letting us speak today. The foundation is committed to serving the needs of this community, and we look forward to a long and positive relationship with the city of Brownsville.
Thank you all so much, RJ, Khalid, Dana, everybody, Felipe, all the other organizations and entities in the Midi Cultural District. Thank you for your work. Really happy to see the Midi family in Brownsville. I know you're probably spending most, more of your time here than you are anywhere else, RJ. And, you know, you've become part of our community, and so is your family, so we appreciate it and looking forward to all the great things that are coming. We've seen some of the master plans already. Adding Roy onto your board, I think, has been a great addition. So thank you all for everything you're doing, and I'm happy to see a lot more collaboration within the district as well. And I think we'll hear a little bit more about that possibly later in the meeting, but thank you all for everything you're doing.
Trey, I know we have some other speakers on deck right now that are waiting to speak today. Do we still have time for those?
Yeah, we need to address those.
Okay, well, I didn't know y'all finished. I thought the presentation was over, so.
We jump to the next slide. It calls up each speaker and the subsequent slides.
All right.
And lets you all know who the speaker is.
Okay, let's just try and be conscious of time and make the presentations as clear and concise as we can. Thanks.
Thank you. I think Felipe's on mute right now. It's Felipe Peña, he's muted. There you go. Try it again, Felipe.
There we go. I think it's on now. So yes, I wanted to kind of just say a few words here. The group, the Midi Cultural District, we all wanted to say thank you so much for allowing us to do this. I want to just read off some of the names of the people on our board. Obviously, Avi Schwartz is from the Chamber of Commerce, Khalid Malstad from the Midi Foundation, Christina Tijerina from The Costumes of the Americas, Jamris McGlore from Parks and Recreation, David Merrill from Wells Fargo Advisors, Yanira Ramirez from Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, Dylan Vanderford from Sombrero Festival, Dana Midi from the Midi Foundation, Eva Garcia with Project Manager for Rails to Trails, Grace Salinas from Cameron County, Graham Sevier Schultz from Seventh and Park, Juan Velez from Historic Preservation, Karen Ballard from the US District Court, Liz Benson from The Costumes of the Americas, Melanie Connor from Holiday Village, Miriam Suarez, the Downtown District Manager, Dr. Pat Birchfield from Gladys Porter Zoo, Reba McNair Cardenas is another board member, Roy De Los Santos, board member from the Midi Foundation, myself, Tara Putinet from Historic Association, and Veronica Rosenbaum from Brownsville Wellness Coalition. All of this make up the Midi Cultural District. And just so you know, a couple of facts, some of you might not be aware, but over 650,000 people visit, travel, and work in the Midi Cultural District each year. We have a minimum of about 200 jobs represented in the city, in the Midi, as well as 15-plus organizations, small businesses, federal, county, city, groups are all represented. Like Khalid said, some of the history starts with the Midi Foundation. It transfers over to Dean Porter Park Renovation Committee, and eventually, the Midi Cultural District is formed and has its own 501(c)(3) in 2017. In 2018, the Midi celebrated 20 years of being an active organization. And last year, we launched a newly designed website, unveiled new street signs to help mark our district with a sense of place. Many other accomplishments have happened in terms of programming and execution of partnerships. And the Midi Cultural District has a vision for the future, and we hope to bring so many more good things to our area. So over the, some of our goals over the next few years include the designation of the cultural district by the Texas Commission of the Arts in Austin. We're also working to create sustainability with the help of the Midi Foundation, and we would like to have an executive director for the district that can dedicate and carry out the mission along with continuing to implement new components of the master plan that we have. And we just want to thank you all so much again for allowing us to do this and helping us get some of these goals accomplished. The city has been a major backer of the district for a long time, and we really appreciate that. So next up is Pat Birchfield from the zoo. So next up is Pat Birchfield from the zoo.
Okay, well, first, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to address you at this time. The Midi Foundation's involvement has transformed the Midi Cultural District into a vibrant, cohesive, functioning cultural district. We actively participate in the zoo events such as Brew at the Zoo and Zufari. RJ Midi has shared our zoo's social media content in his Instagram account, bringing awareness to others globally of our zoo and our mission. We've received grants from the Midi Foundation for assistance in constructing our giraffe shade structure, and also grants for our education department. But having support from the rest of the Midi Cultural District and the Midi Foundation has been invaluable to the Gladys Porter Zoo and to the city of Brownsville in helping to develop a tourism anchor in the Sixth and Seventh Street Corridor, which will ultimately help to develop both the Sixth and Seventh Street Corridor and tourism into downtown Brownsville. I can't emphasize much how much the importance is to be able to anchor people and habituate them to coming to this part and staying in this part of town. So thank you so much to the Midsies for all they've already done, and I look forward to working with them in the future and with the city of Brownsville. We're at the tip of a wonderful opportunity, and a lot of that opportunity is being precipitated by the presence of the Midi Foundation and the development of the cultural district.
Hello. I am here to talk a little bit about the Dean Porter Park Renovation Committee and how this all came about. This was an outgrowth of the Beautification Committee, and it started in 1994. Melanie Connor was tasked with starting a project to polish up Dean Porter Park. We had community meetings with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, park people, Beautification Committee people, zoo, Camille Rotary Club, swim team, nature lovers, Pan American Roundtable, advocates for the physically challenged. And from that, we learned that a small cleanup was not going to suffice. So the park was more than 50 years old at the time, and we then transferred over to a focus group of about 20 people to develop plans. We met for about a year. We saw that it was going to be a major renewal. From the community input, we knew that these 25 acres needed to become a newly polished jewel along the banks of the town or soccer. We, this small project eventually turned into a $14 million project, which lasted more than 10 years. The committee split, the Dean Porter Park Renovation, Inc., was formed, and we split the project into two phases to give us time, trace money, to give the park all it needed in updates. The first part included infrastructure that was more than 50 years old, the water and sewer lines, needed new roads, parking lots, picnic areas, the open-air pavilion needed upgrading, as did the ovens. We had reforestation, we did a pool renovation, and a new playground. Phase two included the Henry de Stefano Room at the Camille, the Ringgold Civic Pavilion, and the Cultural Education Center, which houses the Costumes of the Americas and the Children's Museum. The Dean Porter Park Renovation Committee worked with four city administrations during this 10-plus-year project. We are very grateful to the Midi Cultural, the Midi Foundation for the generosity in helping this project to completion with their $3 million gift. We are also grateful to this city administration for your continued support of the Midi Cultural District, which we feel is envied and should be envied by other cities because of the array of cultural offerings housed there. We are very proud. We know that you are too, of all that has been accomplished, and we look forward to many more improvements in the Midi Cultural District.
Good afternoon. Can I, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Honorable Mayor and members of the commission, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I echo many of the comments that have already been made. In discussing the plans for this presentation, one thing that was of interest was how did Roy Midi come back to Brownsville? I'm going to give you a brief history. It was during his class reunion in the 90s when he ran into Alice Wilson, and we all know Alice was a former active citizen of Brownsville and was a city commissioner and also on the Dean Porter Park renovation. It was during this time that the reunion, her classmate, Roy Midi, was there and they visited. Hold on. Can you lower the volume? It was during this time that Alice mentioned to Mr. Midi, "We're having a park renovation going on." She then called Melanie Connor, and Melanie Connor took the opportunity to travel to Austin, plans in hand, and met the Midi family and members of the foundation. There were various meetings, and then there was the opportunity that the administration of the Midi Foundation came to Brownsville, and they walked the park. And it was shortly thereafter, they knew that this was a place they wanted to make a difference, and Mr. Midi wanted to do something for his hometown. As a result, the city and the Dean Porter Park Board decided to name the Cultural Education Center in their honor, and that extended to forming the Midi Cultural District. And so for 20 years, there has been a lot of work, a lot of growth. And I don't know if we could have been here today, we couldn't have launched this big renovation of the park without many supporters, including the Midi Foundation. And we are forever grateful for all that they have done for the city of Brownsville. And today, the Midi family has decided to come back and make a difference in our community, and we will all be forever grateful for the work, the devotion, and the generosity that they've given to our city. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for the time that you are giving all of us to share with you our experience with the Midi Cultural District and the Midi Foundation.
Believe I'm up next. Good afternoon, I am Dylan Vanderford from Sombrero Festival Limited, one of the several entities represented by the Midi Cultural District Board. Sombrero Festival has had a fantastic relationship and has been represented with the Midi Cultural District for several years. It has been our pleasure to work together on several projects in and around the Midi Cultural District. Our property is one of the first properties seen entering the district from the expressway, and it's been our vision to upgrade the entire look of our property over the last several years, from a simple warehouse to the landscaped facility you see today. Improvements are continuing with the addition of the parking lot and the monument sign, but all of that has come together because of the Midi Cultural District. It's been a great resource in these improvements, helping to tie the various organizations together into a cohesive and planned area that's been aiding us in making decisions that complement the aesthetic of the area. Sombrero Fest has also had the opportunity to lend aid to the district and organizations within. In the recent past, when, for instance, the asbestos was discovered in the Utenas Warehouse, Sombrero Festival was the organization that put up the money and found the company that was able to remediate that asbestos situation so that it could be continued to use by the Brownsville Wellness Coalition and some other entities. The relationship between Sombrero Festival and the Midi Cultural District has even been extended in the past few years to now collaborate with the Midi Foundation itself. It has been an absolute pleasure for us to work with the Midi Foundation and the various projects that they're involved with. With the purchase of properties adjacent to Sombrero Festival, we've collaborated on items like complementary landscaping and identifying the needs of the area, such as restrooms and additional parking. Sombrero Festival is excited to see the progress that the Midi Cultural District has made in the last few years and will continue to support the relationship between the Midi Cultural District, the Midi Foundation, Sombrero Festival, and the city of Brownsville. We're super excited to see more collaboration between these entities all the time. Thank you for your time.
You were good, and then you muted yourself somehow quickly.
Sorry. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening. I'm Christina Quiqui Tijerina, and I am the Director of the Board of the Costumes of Americas Museum. The Costumes of the Americas Museum is proud to call the Midi Cultural Education Center our home. Culture and education in his hometown of Brownsville was important to Roy Midi and his wife, Joanne. Their generosity and community investment gave a group of women the opportunity to transform a private collection of indigenous costumes into a revolving exhibit of over 1,000 pieces. We have been considered a hidden gem by many visitors. The museum commissioned a local artist to create a children's coloring book based on 12 authentic costumes of various states of Mexico. The coloring book has been a great success and has provided unique opportunities to connect with our youth in Brownsville. Last year, the Midi Foundation provided a $10,000 grant to transform our coloring book into an interactive experience for visitors to the costumes and children's museums. The grant was used to purchase a touchscreen kiosk and create custom-made software to bring the coloring book to life. Visitors choose a state of origin and learn the name and description of the traditional costume. The costume is then colored by an interactive process that encourages creativity. It's a lot of fun. Y'all need to come see it. I'm certain our museum is exactly what the Midsies had in mind for the enhancement of Brownsville. We are proud of the culture and education our collection represents in the Midi Cultural District. The opportunity to continue to share this with others would not be possible without the commitment and support of the Midi Foundation and family. Thank you.
I was unmuted, so I guess it's my turn. Hi, everybody, I'm Veronica Dimas Rosenbaum, and I'm the Executive Director for the Brownsville Wellness Coalition. And us two, just echoing in for interest of time, very excited for all the participation that the Midi Foundation and their family and everyone on this board has been supporting the Brownsville Wellness Coalition. Most recently, with all of our food distributions that we've done in the Midi Cultural District during this time during COVID, we are excited that the Midi Foundation has supported the organization by allowing us to continue working. And just echoing everyone's great work around the Midi Foundation and the Midi Cultural District, it is rewarding to see all the programming that many years ago, when I started in this, in this board, it was kind of at a standstill, so I'm very excited to see all that programming in our area. So for the interest of time, I want to thank the Midi Foundation, the city of Brownsville, and everyone, Mayor and Commissioner, thank you for supporting this boy.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the commission. The Children's Museum is grateful to the Midi Foundation for the support and faith in our institution. We would not be where we are without the initial launch into existence that the foundation bestowed on us. To honor the foundation, our building was dedicated as a Roy F. and Joanne Cole Midi Educational Center. After 15 years of being away, the return of the Midi Foundation was a saving grace when they worked with us and the city of Brownsville to provide support for our air conditioning project. Subsequently and conjuctively, the foundation's support has allowed us over five years to provide programming to over 20,000 students across the Rio Grande Valley with free programming focused on STEM. Not only are we grateful to the Midi Foundation, we were also glad to be a part of the Midi Cultural District. With its over 15 entities represented, we are proud of the work that has come to life through our collective. Not only has the group grown in strength and camaraderie, but the collective draws visitors from all parts of the world. Their continual support has been greatly appreciated by the Children's Museum Board, so we thank them. Thank you.
My name is Yanira Ramirez. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Brownsville Commissioners, for letting me speak on today's meeting. On behalf of the Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts Board of Directors and Staff, I would like to thank the Midi Foundation for providing financial assistance to the museum. They support a museum with funds to replenish operating expenses for a fire system inspection made last year. In order to complete our system inspection is to permanent, to conserve our permanent collection that is valued more than $1 million, and also to assure the protection for our visitors, staff, and museum assets, which become part of our community. The Midi Foundation also assists the museum with educational funds to be used to support our youth and music programs. Those programs serve the community in this city and help us to continue educate the youth through the arts. The BMFA is part of the Midi Cultural District. Working together with the other organizations, we are growing, and we also encourage the community to visit us, visit Brownsville, visit Midi, bringing tourists down to the city. For a BMFA being part of the Midi Cultural District means a big step made and the opportunity to continue supporting through the cultural education the whole community. Thank you to the city of Brownsville, thank you to the Midi Foundation, thank you to the Midi family for believing in Brownsville. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. In 2016, the Midi Cultural District first applied for designation from the Texas Commission on the Arts. It was an effort which did not have the support of the entire board at the time, not because it was a bad goal, but because the district was not ready. There were too many components which should be part of a cultural district which were not in place yet. We took the feedback, revamped the organization and strategy, and resolved not to reapply until we were absolutely ready. Since then, the Midi Cultural District has partnered with the Midi Foundation, given their presence in Austin, Texas, since that's where the Texas Commission on the Arts is based. The foundation executive director and one of our foundation board members met with the deputy director for the Texas Commission on the Arts. From that meeting and the feedback to the original application, the strategy forward for designation was born. The key takeaways included expanded district boundaries, economic self-sufficiency, and an increase in focus on art and music programs in the district. We can go to the next slide. Here you'll see some of the assets which could become part of an expanded district. All of these are part of the local culture and/or can serve as a potential venue for art, music, and cultural programming consistent with the Texas Commission on the Arts recommendations. Next steps include presenting to the city commission tonight and taking any feedback you all have on the plans for the district, creating economic self-sufficiency for the Midi Cultural District, increasing focus on art and music, and efforts to increase patronage and tourism to the district and its establishments. Next slide. This slide shows the parcels of land currently owned by the Midi Foundation. The plan is to turn these into revenue The plan is to turn these into revenue-producing properties with revenues going to the Midi Cultural District, thereby creating a revenue stream to allow them to support expanded operations independently. Number one was an old gas station, and the plan is to build it out into an ice cream parlor or soda fountain or both, and then rent it out to someone who will operate it commercially with the rental income going to the Midi Cultural District. Lots two and three are to be converted into parking lots, where we pay-to-pay, pay-to-park, and the monies will go to the Midi Cultural District. And we can jump to the next slide for the other three parcels. The bottom left is the old Jackson Feed and Seed. This is slated to be an art-centric space which will also offer multi-use space for programs and events in the surrounding area and in conjunction with the Cannery Project. Some of the options being considered include long-term lease agreements with lease revenues going to the Midi Cultural District. On the right, the big warehouse, several options are still being considered, including options partnering with entities in the district, BCI-C, and features with the South Texas Astronomical Society. In the center, we have our green outdoor space with open areas, pathways, outdoor stages, outdoor art spaces, and outdoor theater and landscaping paid for by the Midi Foundation and maintained in partnership with Parks and Rec and the Midi Foundation. This is how the foundation will drive economic self-sufficiency for the Midi Cultural District, furthering their efforts toward designation from the Texas Commission on the Arts. For our closing remarks, I'll turn it over to RJ Midi, President of the Midi Foundation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time. Many of you may know me as RJ Midi, but I'm also was born as Roy Frank Midi, named for my grandfather who was born and raised in Brownsville. You know, I was very close with my grandparents and blessed to have time with my grandfather. I was able to, and they were able to instill in me the importance of giving back when able and a strong sense of community which is here in Brownsville. I'm proud of the impact the foundation has in the city of Austin and central Texas as that's where my grandparents live and where my grandfather was based. And home to the Midi Foundation, I'm proud to continue the legacy of my grandfather and his hometown, the City of Brownsville. My grandfather started this effort in Brownsville in the early 90s with Dean Porter Park, as you heard earlier. And was honored when the city chose to name a cultural district for him and my grandmother and to recognize their generosity and commitment to Brownsville. There is still a lot of work to be done, and we are proud to partner with the Midi Cultural District in their efforts to receive the cultural district designation for Brownsville and the opportunities that it will bring to the community. The MCD is closer than ever before to be checking all the boxes required to make this a reality. The Midi Foundation will continue to help, to work, to reach them, to get to that finish line and beyond. The foundation, the Midi Foundation's mission is to identify, engage, and support education and community organizations that have manifested within the vision of the foundation. Scholars of the highest merit are joined with community organizations of high effectiveness to participate. Anyways. I understand I'm a big belief in community, and that's here in Brownsville. And I believe what we're doing here, going to echo not just here in Brownsville, but for the rest of South Texas and the RGV, and be a great shining example for what is here. And I'm happy to be able to provide y'all with an overview of what we've been working on for the past couple of years and continue moving forward, I think. And have a good rest of your evening.
RJ, thank you so much. You heard my comments earlier, how I feel about your family and you definitely, you've become one of our biggest ambassadors. I really appreciate everything that y'all are doing for the City of Brownsville. You know, we can't thank you enough and thank you and everybody at the foundation for this work and for believing in Brownsville.
And I would echo those sentiments. We're so grateful to have you here and all of the work that you do and most definitely all of the philanthropic efforts that you have contributed to the City of Brownsville. And I can tell you that in the 10 years that I've been here, I've seen how much money and people, we tend to forget that in order to make these big changes, in order to make such progress, it comes with a very heavy price tag. And we're so grateful that you have given us so many things to the City of Brownsville, our children's museum, just everything, everything, everything. And I can tell the public that, and RJ can tell you, that I ran into him during Sambro Fest. And he, you know, he's a celebrity. Everybody wants to take pictures with him. And I asked him, I said, "You ever get tired of that?" And he told me, "No, I love Brownsville." Like, no. And so that was so moving to see just your love for the City of Brownsville and how something like that, you know, you love us. And that's incredible. So I'm just so excited to hear about all of your plans for District Four and what's coming in the future. So thank you for everything. I'm on board.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for everything, for the presentation. That was great. Everybody that participated and everybody that talked about their respective entities, thank you. I don't think we all always know everything that you do and all the great things that are happening at your different museums and boards. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I welcome more engagement from the cultural district with our board and the commission so we can, you know, stay engaged and, you know, find ways that we can support you guys even more. So thank you. Thank you again, guys.
I'd like to echo the same sentiments. Just thank you guys for all the jobs that you all have been doing in the past and really looking forward to partnering some more and continue working.
We can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
That's it.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to thank you guys for participating in the City of Brownsville and doing what you have been doing for, in the past, and really looking to work even more today and in the future. So thank you and welcome, and I hope we can continue working and certainly those ties that we have.
I'd like to extend my gratitude as well.
And mine as well. Thank you very much. I've been thrilled since I met you at the museum a couple of years ago for the 20th anniversary proclamation. You took my breath away, RJ, and I am so glad that you and the foundation are here. Thank you very much.
And RJ, my sister sends her regards. She's one of your biggest fans, as you know. All right, Gersalda, thank you.
For the record, Mayor, Commissioner Ron Gueye has been in the meeting. The next agenda item is the public comment period. Just a few housekeeping rules. This is limited to three minutes. As soon as your three minutes are up, you're going to be cut off. And I'm going to say the name of the next person so that the next person can continue with their statement. At this time, I am going to ask for Mr. Mark Cashwan. Are you on, sir?
Yeah, I thought I was going to be speaking to a later agenda item, but I can speak now. I was going to speak to the item on the, can you just clarify that for me?
Yeah, Mark, you're going to speak now, but we know that your comment's related to the agenda item. That's the way we're doing it.
I see. Okay. Well, very well. All right. Well, my name's Mark Cashwan. I'm a co-founder of Frontera Progressive, and I have been actively working with the city on the age two of the Jefferson Davis Memorial for over two years. I want to thank Mayor Mendez and Commissioner Tetra for finally putting this agenda, this item on the agenda. I have two points that I want to make tonight. My first point is that I've now heard four possible alternatives for the removal of the memorial. Destroy it, donate it to either the Brownsville Historical Museum, the United Daughters of the Confederacy, or the State of Texas. Now, resolving this may take time. As we have seen this week, as long as the memorial sits there, it will be a target for defacement. If you want to preserve it, then the plaque needs to be removed immediately. Put the plaque in storage until the rest of it can be sorted out. Order the city manager to take it down as soon as possible, like tomorrow. Two of our very capable city employees with power tools could have it down in five or 10 minutes. My second point is that I hope you'll think very carefully about what to do with it. Please do not give it back to the United Daughters of the Confederacy, which sees it as an object of veneration. It means giving a gift to the very organization that gave us this problem in the first place. The symbolism of that gift would send the wrong message to the world about who we are. I'm also concerned about giving it to the Brownsville Historical Museum for reasons that I detailed in an email that I sent to all of you. If they take it, they must make it clear that Jefferson, the Jefferson Davis Memorial is an artifact of Jim Crow and a troubling time for race relations in the early 20th century. The memorial refers to Davis as a martyr.
One minute.
Davis was no martyr. He lived another 25 years after the Civil War and was not substantially harmed materially. But we associate martyrdom with just causes. To say that Davis was a martyr is to say that the institution of slavery for which he led the Confederacy was just and that the ideology of white supremacy, which he preached for 25 years after the war ended, was just. But I think we can all agree that neither slavery nor white supremacy should ever be associated with justice. So the plaque is both historically inaccurate and morally offensive.
15 seconds.
What I personally would like to see at this point is that the plaque to Jefferson Davis be removed as soon as possible, this week. Take it down and establish an ad hoc committee to decide what to do with it. The boulder can stay, but perhaps become the setting for a new plaque that reflects the values.
We're going to move on to the next speaker. I apologize, but we do have to move on to the next speaker. Next person we have is Ms. Yolanda Spees. Are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Your time is right now.
First of all, thank you for giving me the time to speak. I'd like to thank each and every one of you, especially the mayor. And what I basically wanted to say is that about 15 years ago, I went to the Bob Bullock Museum of Texas History in Austin. I don't know if any of y'all are familiar with it, but it was right across the UTIC campus, and it was one of the most biased and racist museums I'd ever been in. When I called to complain about the exhibits, I was met with very dismissive, a very dismissive tone by the museum. This feeling is the same one that I felt after reading the email. I'm sorry. This feeling I felt after reading the email was the same one that I felt when I was in the seventh grade and I was told that I had to take Texas history class, where the proud and valiant Texans destroyed the despicable Mexicans. What I got out of Texas history was that we should be ashamed to be Mexican. My parents are from Mexico. I'm the only one born in the United States out of six children. I was 12 years old. How do you think that jacked up my view of myself, my culture, my people, and my family? It only served me to dig in my heels. I hated history after that. I hated history because a lot of the history we read didn't make a lot of people of Mexican descent seem like they were part of the fabric that made the US what it is today, what we are and we have been. I propose that we put the Jefferson Davis Memorial in a museum and give it the proper context. Why did the DOC feel the need to put up an inaccurate monument to someone who was comfortable with the idea of owning people? Did they want to confuse people as to what they did? When we remove the memorial and put it in the museum, because that is where it belongs, with the proper context, I think we should replace it with something more child and family-friendly. I would hope that people would be more comfortable putting something like Cantinflas or Chespirito in Washington Park. Both gave their lives to bring smiles to Spanish-speaking children's faces, and Washington Park is a family park, and many of us speak Spanish as a first language. It's not only the appropriate thing to do, it's the right thing to do to rectify the 92 years of having a lie sitting in the park justifying not only the slavery of black people, but indoctrinating brown people into speaking against their own interests. The rock may not have affected certain brown people, but because they were not discriminated against, or was it because they were simply being brainwashed into thinking it wasn't so bad? It would be inappropriate to even entertain the idea of putting a memorial anywhere else, like the Veterans Park. He was a traitor to our country. I'm sorry, I lost my place here. I'm almost finished, though, I promise. He was a traitor to the US, and he was not a martyr. It needs to go into a museum with the proper context and replace it with Cantinflas or Chespirito, because like I said, they dedicated their entire lives to making us happy as children and as adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Bruce Kidd. Bruce Kidd, are you on the line, sir?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I am a member of the Sons Confederate Veterans. We have been fighting with these other splinter groups going on five years now. We had met with Mr. Cashwan and another young lady. Our last meeting was two years ago, and we did decide that we would move the memorial. The city was unable to do anything at that time and has dragged on to this point. His continued rhetoric is very tiresome, as is his last young ladies'. Yes, perhaps there is discrimination. There continues to be discrimination in Brownsville. That's not a secret. The memorial was not a memorial to white supremacy, nor is it a memorial to the Ku Klux Klan or anything like that. What it was, was the southernmost point of the Jefferson Davis Highway. It was to be set at Port Isabel. They didn't have room for it, so it was set in Brownsville. It was moved off of the corner of Palm Boulevard and Elizabeth to the park and sat there up until the time of 2015 where Mr. Castillo decided that it was offensive and racist. I would like to also add that our group gives out awards every year to ROTC students. One of the highest awards is a Santos Benavides, who is the highest-ranking member of the Confederacy. So if we're white supremacists and racists, why would we be giving out this award? Another award is to a Sergeant Washington, who was an African-American. Here again, if we're racist and white supremacists, why would we be giving out this award? We have a lot of Hispanics in our group. We have African-Americans in our group. We have Native Americans in our group. So to have Mr. Cashwan and his group of cronies say that we're racist and white supremacists makes me sick to my stomach. And I know it is one of their group that has defaced the memorial back two years ago. It's a member of his group that defaced it over the weekend, and they will continue to deface it until we move it. We said we will move it. We have no problem moving. If it's bothering them, we will move it. We have the means to move it from the park. And we also found documentation that it does belong to the UDC. In meetings that we had two years ago, somehow magically, it was said that it belonged to the city, but they would not share with the UDC's attorney where this information comeback came from, stating that it was confidential. Well, if this is supposed to be part of a public meeting, how can all this be closed doors and hidden agenda?
We have Mr. Ruben Cordova. Are you on the line, sir? You can unmute yourself. Ruben Cordova?
We carried him off. We didn't carry her off. That says exactly where it's at.
Hello? Mr. Cordova? Let's go to the next speaker, Gersalda.
Denise Castro?
Yes, I am on the line.
Go ahead.
So a memorial is a memorial. I urge the City Commission to modify the item on the agenda for the memorial to specifically be given to a museum that will, that will have the appropriate context. There are many museums across the US like the Memorial of Enslavement that is run by IJI, Equal Justice Initiative. This, this organization has done a great job at, at, you know, telling history and representing, representing history in a correct way that is also respectful to those that have been a victim of racism and white supremacy. I would just like to urge the City Commission to take this into account and not just to, you know, decide to give the memorial to any, or any museum or any organization because this memorial can turn up again in another, in another place in the US. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Sadie Hernandez. Are you on the line? Mayor, we'll move on to the next one, Ofelia Alonso.
Okay.
Are you on the line, ma'am? Please unmute yourself.
Ofelia?
Hi.
Hey, go ahead.
My name is Ofelia Alonso. I am a citizen of Brownsville, Texas, and I'm here to comment on the Jefferson Davis Memorial. I want to thank the commissioners and the mayor for bringing it up at an agenda meeting. And I would like to encourage you all to say yes to removing and moving the monument. I do, however, request that there is full transparency on where this monument is going. As people before me have expressed, it is not appropriate to give it back to the United Daughters of the Confederacy. Last time that we went through this city process, the UDC had expressed that they would continue to display it, and I don't think that that's appropriate. I don't think that that does what we want. The whole point of removing the monument is adding context and really appropriately showcasing it for what it symbolizes. And that won't be possible if we give it to someone like the United Daughters of the Confederacy or the previous gentleman who was representing his Confederate group. So that is all that I request, and I hope that you all take into consideration community input on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Victoria Guerrero.
Hi. Yes, can you all hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Awesome. My name is Victoria Guerrero, and I live in District 2 here in Brownsville, and I'm with the organization Texas Rising. I'm here to speak on the removal of the Jefferson Davis Monument. As a community member, I'm very glad to see that the city is finally taking action on getting rid of the Jefferson Davis Monument that does not represent the values of our community or reflect the idea that Black Lives Matter and that we, as a city, stand against racism and discrimination. It's disappointing to see that it has taken years for us to get to this point, but either way, I'm very glad that we're finally taking action and that there is a chance for it to be taken away. So I urge you all to vote in favor of removing this racist monument. And along with that, I ask for full transparency in where the rock will go after it is removed, or the plaque, where it will go after it is removed. It is important that these harmful monuments of racist leaders are handled with care and consideration for what they really were and are considered to the truthful history that will depict these people for what they really were and not just putting them on a pedestal in a different location. From what I understand and from what I've heard about this meeting, the United Daughters of the Confederacy has expressed interest in the rock previously. And I want to ensure that this rock is not given to an organization that isn't going to accurately represent who this person was and what they stood for. Because of this, it is important that the city is very clear with us on who exactly they plan on giving the rock to. Thank you all for your time and for hearing me today.
Thank you.
Next, we have Teresa Gaiegles. Are you on the line, ma'am?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Teresa Gaiegles, and I'm a Brownsville citizen and regular voter. I want to speak about the Jefferson Davis Memorial, which is an embarrassment to Brownsville. It makes us look backwards, ignorant, and racist. As the rest of the country moves Confederate memorials, we cannot pretend it's okay to keep ours. The plaque announces to the world that our city is an unwelcoming place, clinging to a racist history and calling it our heritage, even though that's not who we really are. Finally, this memorial sends the wrong message to our kids. They need to know that the adults they respect think racism and treason are abominations, not things to be honored in Washington Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jose Colono Vias.
Hi, folks. It's me again. As you know, my name is Joe Colono Vias. I'm a resident of here in Brownsville District 4, and I'm here to speak on Action Item 1 in regards to the Jefferson Davis Memorial. I'm also with Texas Rising. I want to thank the commissioners and mayor for finally doing the right thing and proposing to remove the eyesore that is a Jefferson Davis Monument from public view. We know we are not rewriting history because we know what happened. And millions of black Americans across this country and around the world know what happened. There is no need to glorify traitors who sought to keep other human beings enslaved. There's no need to glorify people who oppress others and the entire community. There's also no need to glorify the trauma and pain suffered by those who had to endure the American sin of slavery. Black Lives Matter, always. I ask that you vote yes and remove the monument once and for all, and that there is full transparency in identifying where that rock ends up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Fernando Alonso.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can you speak up, please?
Yes, of course. Hi, my name is Fernando, and I live in District 4. And I'm an organizer with Texas Rising. I'm here asking for the city to vote yes for the removal of the monument that commemorizes Confederate President Jefferson Davis. I am asking the leaders to vote for the removal of the monument because it is baffling that we are here talking about keeping the monument, honoring an enemy of the United States that fought for the preservation of slavery. Now is the best time to remove this monument as racial division has split this country in two over racist monuments glorifying the horrible times black men, women, and children had to face during the Civil War. This call for Black Lives Matter should be taken seriously by the city so we can be a shining example of us removing our racist history once and for all. We are commemorating this person for bravery and allegiance to the United States when they were the ones to illegally secede from the Union. You would not expect this kind of behavior from any other nation that had a bloody Civil War that killed thousands of its own men. White supremacists, like the United Daughters of the Confederacy, gifted and created these racist monuments of Confederate leaders as a way to scare black people and remind them of their status as second-class citizens during the Civil Rights Era. We don't need these markers of racism plaguing our city and reminding us of a troubled past that discriminated slots of people because of the color of their skin. So please vote yes to remove the monument and relocate it to somewhere appropriate. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, those are all the speakers we have. For the record, the following people did turn in public comments, but they do not wish to state their opinion. The names are Jason Salinas, Juan Trevino, Anna Chapa, Teresa Saldivar, Juan Cantú, Claudio Cerano, and Steven Lucas. So we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is the work session. Our work session number one, presentation and update of Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority projects, including the West Trail Project, West Boulevard Project.
Mayor, city commissioners, we invited the Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority to provide an update on the projects they're working on within the city limits of Brownsville. And so I know we have Mr. Pizza Pulveda, the executive director for the RMA here.
Thank you, Huel, Mayor and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you on a couple of projects. I'll be brief, but we have made some progress on some of the projects, so we thought it was important that we come before you all and provide a status. So sure you have the backup presentation in your package or on your computer. First project is the South Port Connector Project. This is a two-mile segment that will connect the south part of the Port of Brownsville to State Highway 4. This will be built to overweight standards because this will be the first phase of the East Loop Project. So this two-mile segment will meet all overweight standards as required by the state and TechDOT. This project is sponsored by the Port of Brownsville, but we assisted the port in getting the project environmentally clear, getting the schematics completed, relocating utilities, completing the design, and providing funding through the RGV MPO. The port has awarded the contract. They have a contractor on board, and construction should start very soon in the near future. Next project is the expansion of the passenger vehicle lanes at the Veterans Bridge. As you all know, the county shares the net proceeds of the Veterans Bridge with the city of Brownsville. So what we plan on doing here is increasing the capacity, going from four primary lanes for passenger vehicles to eight primary lanes. This project is environmentally clear. The schematics are complete. The right-of-way utilities are complete. The design is complete and has been approved by CBP, GSA, and TechDOT, and the project is fully funded. So it's shovel-ready. We're negotiating a final donation acceptance agreement with CBP, and we should go to a letting in the next four to six months. Next project is the East Loop Project. As you all know, this is a project that will connect the Veterans Bridge with the Port of Brownsville. This will become the overweight corridor that the state legislature approved in 2009. We're doing the environmental document in-house at the RMA, and it's about 80% complete. The schematics are complete. Right-of-way and utilities are in progress. We're working with TechDOT to accelerate the acquisition of the right-of-way. We recently awarded a contract to a consultant so they can begin the design of the project, and the project gets fully funded through the RGV MPO. And we are working with the RGV MPO and the district office at TechDOT to hopefully fully fund the project in the next UTP for the year 2021, which is coming up in July of this year. This project presents some complex mitigation issues with US Fish and Wildlife and IBWC, but we have made great progress with US Fish and Wildlife. We have an agreement in place on the mitigation that will be required. So Fish is doing an environmental assessment to comply with their regulations. IBWC, we're negotiating an agreement with them on the relocation of a portion of their levy. So this project is moving along very well, making a lot of progress, and hopefully we can get it funded to a full capacity in the next couple of months. Next project is the Old Dallas Project. This goes from Sports Park Boulevard to Highway 100 in Los Fidesnos. This project, we're also doing the environmental document in-house. It's 85% complete. The schematics are complete. The right-of-way utilities are complete. We're pending the full design of it, and the project is fully funded in the UTP. We anticipate having a public meeting because we are using federal money for the construction. Either the first or second week of July, we're going through TechDOT and establishing a firm date for that. We hope to have the final engineering complete by December, January. So construction for this segment should be started in the next six, nine, 12 months, depending on the final engineering of the project. The West Rail Trail Project. This is the old abandoned rail right-of-way. We're doing the environmental document in-house. It's about 60% complete. The schematics are 90% complete. We submitted those to TechDOT to get their approval on them so that we can proceed with the design of the project. The right-of-way and utilities are in place. The project is partially funded. We're working with TechDOT and the city to try and determine what other funding sources are available to us, but we think we've got a good plan moving forward, working with the RGV MPO staff and the district staff at TechDOT. This project will also require a public meeting because we are going to use federal money. We're thinking that early fall, late summer, early fall, we're going to a public meeting. We're wanting to have the full engineering complete by December, January, the latest. So again, this project, hopefully in the next nine months or so, we can have it under construction if we can get the funding for it. So good progress on this project, and hopefully, like I said, we can get it under construction in the next nine months. The roadway component of it, from Alton Lord to FM 802, we're working on the environmental document as well, in-house at the RMA. The schematics are about 90% complete. The right-of-way utilities are in place. The design is pending, and we've got the project funded through the RGV MPO. We're having to go through the Federal Highway Administration to get the project functionally classified and able to use federal funds for the project. But this project, we're also making good progress on. Morrison Road Project. This is the extension of Morrison Road from Paredes Line Road to FM 511. We've got the environmental document underway, the preliminary engineering, the schematics as well. We're giving some hard looks at about three different alternatives, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can meet with city staff to go over those alternatives and then proceed from those alternatives. Indiana Avenue, this is around the Brownsville Airport area. We're working with TechDOT District Office to go through the consultant selection process, to get a consultant on board to develop an environmental document, the schematics, and then the design. This project, just like Morrison Road, is funded in the MTP. And so as soon as we can get through the environmental phase, we can proceed and complete the design and then move on to the construction. Dana Road Project. This is a project we're working with city Brownsville and Cameron County. This is from FM 802 to FM 3248. We have an interlocal agreement with the county. I believe an interlocal is going to the city of Brownsville July 16 to utilize local funding to proceed with the environmental document, schematics, and the design. This project is fully funded in the UTP. There's $10.5 million available for construction. So we want to be able to accelerate the project, work on the environmental document design so that we can get it to a construction phase. And like I said, the construction funding is in place at this point.
Mayor, just to let the commission know, this item is currently not on the books yet, but we'll bring it back to the City Commission during the July 7 meeting for that interlocal agreement with the county.
Then the last slide is just the US 77, the conversion of that to interstate standard. There's quite a bit of activity going on in Willacy, Clayburg, and Nuesus County. The relief road around Driscoll, I think, is about 50% complete. I believe TechDOT is working on the right-of-way map to acquire the right-of-way around Iveta. There's a great separation that's funded in the Kingsville area on FM 1717. So there's a lot of activity along that road, but we need to complete that conversion to interstate standard that can help us lure industry into the city of Brownsville. So Mayor, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that there might be.
Thanks so much, Pete. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Segulma? No, all right. Thank you so much. It's great work. Looking forward to a lot of these.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, next work session number two. We're going to go ahead and meet that one for the next City Commission meeting, so we'll move on to work session number three.
Yes.
Session regarding the city of Brownsville response to the urgent publicity necessity concerning COVID-19, otherwise known as coronavirus, included and not limited to. We are going to present items B and C, which is the financial update, emergency procurement, and letter C, drive-through collections, testing site update.
Good evening, honorable mayor, commissioners. Briefly, we're going to go over the financial spending update as of June 12. I have expenditure summary. Budget expenditures, about $3.9 million. Non-budget expenditures, which encompasses emergency pay, overtime, supplies, emergency procurements, and about $2.6 million. Total COVID-related expenses, about $6.5 million. Next page, please. COVID impact, total cost associated here is about $6.1 million. This relates to expenditures, non-emergency. I'll cover the emergency in a little while. You see, majority is personnel costs, and then you have different buckets of expenditures related to supplies, equipment, and items of that sort. Next page, please. We further broke down the personnel costs. It's one of the biggest components. Total personnel cost, $5.9 million, broken up into the major fire, PD, and other departments, as indicated on there, which encompasses the base pay and overtime pay and emergency pay. Next page, please. We further broke them down into the departments that are associated with this personnel cost. The highest departments, the top 10 departments, are listed on the left-hand side, and the right-hand side lists all the other departments related to expenditures on this. Next page, please. There have not been any emergency-type of procurement purchases for PPE masks. I'll go back to this. I'll go back to this topic real quick to give an update on the PPE mask update. The other procurement item that we have is the drive-through collection and testing. The majority is broken up into two items. The operating costs that are attributed to medical staff. It's about $96,000. Testing supplies, this is associated with testing kits for uninsured individuals. Going back to the PPE supplies, to get an update on this. Currently, what we did is we contacted various departments and asked for the current inventory. Police department has approximately about 4,800 N95 masks. This translates to about a four-month supply using current burn rates, current utilization. Fire department has approximately about 2,600 N95 masks. Again, this represents about a one-month supply. Both of these departments obtained their restocking from our internal service department. Internal Service Department is tasked to have any supply on availability for use. Current, there's about 10,000 masks that the Internal Service Department has on stock related to N95s and about 3,000 related to K95s. It's a slightly version of the N95, total about 1,300 masks. These are the most important crucial items. The Internal Service Department also has a list of other inventories that they have relating to cleaners, gloves, disinfectants, types of gowns and protective gowns. What we're doing right now is working collaboratively with Internal Service Department so that we could ramp up our procurement of these PPE supplies so that we could have a healthy stock available for the long run. And that concludes my presentation. Have any questions?
Lupi, I didn't really understand what you were saying about the fire department. We only have one month of N95s left. Is that what you were saying?
On their current supply, what they have at the department right now, they have about 2,600 masks, which represents about one month's worth of masks availability. But we also have about 1,300 masks in our Internal Service Department, which is restocked, restores police and fire. But at the same time, we're proactively going out and getting restock of masks, gloves, and all those protection supplies.
I just feel like with the numbers skyrocketing, maybe we should have more than one month, but...
Yeah, definitely so. That's our plan to continue aggressively procuring more of these supplies.
Okay, thank you. One more question. Are any other departments, because I know that we have a lot of departments that deal with the public, maybe not as much as fire and the police department, but there are other staff members that we have that deal with the public. Are they given N95s or are they just told to wear whatever they have?
I don't... Ms. Odi or Ms. Sheld, Mr. Sheld, would you happen to have?
Honorable mayor commissioners, I can help answer that. So the PPE recommendations, we follow CDC guidelines. Healthcare personnel, for example, would be using N95s because that's the highest level. Staff who are in other job duties where a face cover like in the office right now is sufficient. There's other PPE levels that can be utilized. But definitely, we're working so that the N95s and the PPE that's put to use is appropriate to that job condition that's being done by the respective employee, regardless of what department they're in.
Thanks.
One slight item to mention is that we recently procured a supply of about 3,500 PPE masks that got delivered today. And again, continue to work on adding to our supply.
That's great. Thanks.
We're going to have a presentation on any of the, from Dr. Rodriguez at all, or anybody else? There we go. Thank you, Lupi.
Yes, sir.
Honorable mayor commissioners, good evening. I'm going to start with the COVID-19 drive-through testing site numbers running through June 12, 2020. To date, we've had 3,668 tests administered. I want to expand a little bit on this column because we're seeing definitely a conversation with our provider that many of local businesses and employers have started to use a drive-through as a way of screening their employees for positives and negatives. We think this is a good direction to be business-friendly. And we're seeing this as one of the reasons that we continue to have the drive-through. We, of course, still have to do it based on criteria, symptoms, and of course, exposed to other individuals. So our numbers have gone up in the drive-through. But we continue with the same breakdown of 50% insured to 50% uninsured. To date, since we started the drive-through, we have had 263 positives and 2,907 negatives. Keep in mind that we are at day 60. Day 60 of the drive-through dates. As of yesterday, we had 501 results pending. And while that may sound like a big number, just know that the lab will result 80, 90, or 100 results at any given time. So this is commensurated with the level of activity that we're seeing. Next slide. So as I mentioned at the beginning, we've seen an increase in uptake of requisitions coming in through the intake. We've adjusted for this capacity. When we first designed the drive-through, we designed it to be able to add capacity to the drive-through. We installed six lanes from the very beginning. This past week, on Monday, we had a conversation with our contractor. And due to increased demand, we have pivoted and added additional lanes. Specifically, we've added three additional medical assistants. And to be able to add two more lanes, these assistants will be specifically completing the specimen collections. And we believe this will allow us to process an additional 300 people daily. In addition, a little bit further down the chain, once people test positive or negative, they need to be reached by a nurse practitioner and a PA. And this allows also the processing of those phone calls so that people don't have to wait too long and be notified after they get the results. We believe that this process will be able to allow us to handle to 500 to 700 submissions because they are also the same individuals that review that criteria daily for people who come up to the website to sign up. In addition, I just want to remind individuals, we do have a nurse practitioner, PA through ValuMed Urgent Care that's currently at no cost as part of the contract that we have. So this additional add-ons are to be able to keep up with the capacity issue that we have come into here recently. Next slide. So as the tests are coming up and the results are coming up, we're also working to protect our employees. And one of the programs that we're working through is we've been working and having conversations with Dr. McCormick. As you may have heard me say before, the serology tests have been something that the FDA had trouble getting out of the production system. So Dr. McCormick is currently doing a study with a specific product to make sure that the specificity is accurate so that if a test is positive on a serology, it really is a test result that we're getting with a high level of confidence. We believe we are seven to 10 days away from being able to have some of these kids tested out in the community. And we're hoping that this will also roll into a bigger program where our employees can come in and be tested through the serology test on a regular basis here within the next two, potentially two, three, three weeks. But this, this actions by Dr. McCormick, that UT Health System and the city of Brownsville are big because we believe we're the only ones in South Texas who've actually taken the time to test the serology products because they had such a low level of confidence so that we can now have a high level of confidence, given test results as accurate. The next additional action is we're looking at a Phase II testing, Phase II testing at a local laboratory concept. This is a project that's being led by Cameron County and the School of Public Health. We believe that this project will actually allow us to process the PCR testing at a local level to be able to get us test results at a faster turnaround time. Laboratory testing time is always an issue. And we're hoping that this initiative will help to turn around results in a shorter timeframe than we've been seeing. In addition, the Public Health Department, before I go to the next bullet point, recently, we've been very busy following up on restaurants, banks, businesses, retailers, who have had individuals test positive for COVID. So working with Brownsville PD and the Health Department, we have a joint initiative to really work in a positive friendly environment to get businesses about the sanitation practices, the policies that need to be developed. I think, and I want to be clear, the governor has really limited some of the abilities that cities can do to be able to have a mask policy citywide. However, we have found that one of the ways that we can bypass that barrier is by assisting businesses to use best practices and have plans at their business locations so that they can continue to protect not only their employees, but any customers that might come in. And as you know, customers want to feel safe that they're going to restaurants or to retailers. And we're hoping that by this joint initiative, that we can build confidence in our citizens, not only to wear a mask when they're out in public, but to understand the meaning of having this type of policy by business owners. And this is a policy that really will help the business owners to empower themselves and their employees to ask their customers to wear a mask. Lastly, we're currently working on a plan to training our internal staff for contact tracing. We have two individuals at this time who have completed the training and we have three more about to complete it. We've been using this internally in our city staff, but we're working to expand this as a practice as we see more and more individuals test positive for COVID. And one of the big, big goals of the Health Department is to try to get ahead of the contact tracing so that we can limit the community spread and try and bring it back to the link to a previous investigation. So you'll see this grow more in the recent, in recent time. Next slide. So you've seen this slide before. It has to do with key events that have occurred and key executive orders. And this slide is just meant to give the public an idea of how many executive orders and what events have occurred out in the community that we felt have led to significant increases in our, in our testing and then our positivity rate. The next slides, I'll let our epidemiologist go into that. Ms. Joe?
Hello. Can we go to the next slide, please? All right, and this slide right here, we're looking at the daily case and death count within Brownsville since the inception of the coronavirus outbreak here in the city. And as you can see, we did have some of those items with arrows there. So with each new reopening level or a major, a big event where a large crowd form, and we can see a little uptick in not only our cases, but also some of our deaths. And the, the blue line that dotted across, that's a seven-day moving average of our positivity as we're moving, the seven-day moving average. And as you can see, that we're seeing that big increase, especially once we got down probably about two weeks ago, we're really starting to see those cases jump up. And one thing that's happening also is that we're seeing a larger portion of those that are coming across as a community spread. If we'll go to the next slide, you'll be able to see that. Yeah, that one. Okay, yeah. So you can see the differences in the types of contact that we're getting with these cases. So we're seeing that big jump within the community spread. And we're also seeing the link to previous cases, which is important to see because with the link to previous cases, we know that those are where we've got a clear line of infection. And whereas community spread, we don't know the place, time, or individuals in which that is happening, which is important. And that's one of the indicators that we always monitor for. And that'll also help us with mitigation strategies and how we want to proceed with some of the non-pharmaceutical interventions when we're dealing with branding or messaging within the city. And the next slide. And as you can see, one of the things that previously we had mentioned was that we saw it was a little flatter with the 20 to 29-year-olds and the 50 to 59 and that age group kind of being a little more succinct. But we're starting to see where the younger individuals, the 20 to 29 and the 30 to 39s, are really what's driving some of the infections that we're seeing today. And that's really important because oftentimes, they are exhibiting the more mild symptoms. And so sometimes, when we're younger, we feel like we can do more. We're kind of invincible and we're not being affected as much. So we want to make sure that when we're moving forward, any messaging that we're doing or any strategies that we create are targeting those individuals in particular because although they will have positive or more positive health outcomes, they have the likelihood of bringing that home to maybe a grandmother, grandfather, an aunt or uncle. And once we move into that stage, that's where you're seeing the more negative health outcomes with higher death or case fatalities and adverse outcomes with ventilators, hospitalizations. So it's just important to keep that in mind. Can we move to the next slide, please? All right, and this is, we ran a positivity rate. And as you can see, as we move along, we kind of had a few jumps where we get kind of like a little bit of a rush in and we get a little spikes in our positivity. But as you can see, as we progressed along up to June 9, we are seeing that the seven-day moving trend line is actually starting to increase, which means we're sampling more individuals and a larger percentage of those individuals are coming out positive. Before, we were kind of hovering around seven and a half. But now, as you can see towards the end, we are getting up into about 13 or 14%. And I anticipate that to actually increase even more because what we are seeing in the drive-through is that we're having more individuals. We had over 170% increase in individuals requesting to be tested and being approved for testing. So as those test results start coming up or cycling through, we expect that positivity rate to increase and to also see a larger increase in the cases that we're going to be seeing. Next slide.
So honorable mayor commissioners, so our COVID-19 boots in the ground operations, we're at day 38. To date, we've had over 43% of households in Brownsville reached. That's 22,165. As a resource, this is also a resource for businesses. And we're always working with the local organizations when we do this operation because there's a lot of material, for example, for the census that we include in there. And as we've grown through this, we pivot a little bit. Some of these inspectors now are currently doing our restaurant checks and our retailers' checks. But this continues to be a good exercise for us because as we reach these households and we learn more information, we're able to pivot and provide this information to the homeowner, almost to their, literally to their doorsteps. And we're currently on the northeast side of town. And we continue to ask our mayor and commissioners to social media this because it is really a lot of good information there in the packet, the UTR TV, these, the drive-through at the sports park, and even some of the other activities that may come in from time to time that we can message through the operation, which we've seen a lot of effectiveness. We definitely saw a big rise come out of the South Most area and a lot of people were testing when we were doing this. And we continue to see people testing due to this, due to this operation. So we think it's a key component of what we're doing in the city right now. And I want to thank you for your ongoing support. Any questions? Next slide.
So I have a comment rather than a question. And that is that we're looking at July 4 coming up very fast. And it certainly is a time when people gather together and go to the beach and celebrate a very important time of the year. And that's exactly the wrong thing. And that's exactly the wrong thing to do in terms of the danger of spreading the COVID even faster. We're seeing an uptick in years so so capable of presenting because of Memorial Day and easing of restrictions and right on the heels of July 4th coming up could be even worse. So I would like to personally urge everyone in this city to consider their actions with these holidays coming up and understand that you may not be very ill if you acquire the virus, but we are also seeing an increase in deaths in our grandmothers and theas and parents who have comorbid conditions. So it's not it's not just what happens to you, but it is what can occur in your surroundings.
Commissioner, thank you for your comments. I want to add that the activity the last seven days make us and the Health Department be very cognizant that we don't recommend any social activity at this time, whether it's a city activity or a private function. Had you asked me 10, 14 days ago, I probably would have had a different answer for you. But given the data that we're seeing today, we definitely would not recommend any activity that would increase the positivity rate other than where we're at right now. Thank you.
I really appreciate those comments, Dr. Gowen, because it's very true. We're seeing a lot of young people get infected at work, whatnot, go back home, infect not only their spouse, children, whatnot, but their parents and grandparents and cousins and when you look at the readout of the day that Cameron County puts out, you'll see one entire box, one strip that says "link to previous case." And there have been as many as 15 to 20 people in that box and that tells you that one person infected their entire, entire bloodline. And it's just terrifying. The last thing that I was going to ask, Dr. Art, can you tell us how many submissions we received yesterday for testing in the drive-through? Testing at the sports park?
I will give you the confirmed number, but if, right off the top of my mind, I believe it was 468. But I believe that figure is higher. It has to do with what time you started counting and what time you stopped counting. But it was definitely a higher figure than we had been experiencing.
And we also had an issue where our phones went down and the internet went down. So even with that number, it's a lot higher because people couldn't access the city for about five hours, right? Is that correct?
So the phones come in into when you're trying to confirm the visit or when you're trying to have that conversation with people who tested positive. That's where the phone lines really placed a big barrier and the ability of the staff at the at the drive-through and at the clinic to be able to process all the work for that day. And it was a particularly hard Monday for us given the increase of a Monday and then the fact that your phone lines were down most of the day.
And so just to ask you, get this question 10 times a day in my inbox. I know the answer, but I want you to tell everybody the answer. Is it safe to go out and eat? Like, is it guaranteed that I'm not going to get COVID if I go out and eat in a restaurant?
I'm going to give you my personal opinion. I have not sat down at a restaurant out of the safety for my own family. And I do wear the mask everywhere in public. So I would encourage everyone to continue wearing their mask in public. And, you know, it's about choices and risk. Every time the executive orders come out and it opens up the businesses more, we understand where that's headed. But we want the public to realize it's also increasing a risk level because you're having more people present. And if you think of the ratios, you probably have more positives present. Because people don't know, I think we've mentioned this figure before, but up to 80% of people don't have any signs and symptoms and they don't know their COVID carriers. So you are eating anywhere out in public at risk right now. But I don't want to make my statement to seem that we're not recommending eating. What we're recommending is being very risk aware and knowing that any activity that you're doing right now where you're not wearing a protective covering over your mouth and hand washing and social distancing, whether you're eating or visiting something, is a risky behavior.
And my last question, if I, let's say somebody works somewhere and it's a restaurant or it's a place where there's a lot of public activity taking place and coworkers start testing positive, but let's say the establishment doesn't want anybody to know and it kind of starts, you know, just becoming very secretive. Is there a number that people can call to let the Health Department know?
So we have several ways. We've been monitoring when we get calls in social media channels because that's been one of our primary channels, but we also recommend people to reach us at the Health Department at 546 H E L P. For that is 546 3437, 542 3437, or 546 HELP, H E L P. They also can email us or they can also reach us by social media, Twitter, Facebook handles that we have up there.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I can stress a couple of things. One is speaking to the hospital CEOs this morning, speaking to the provider who's doing the drive-through testing over the course of the last several days and speaking to Dr. Rodriguez on a regular basis. It's undeniable at this point in time that this is the worst it's ever been. Our positives are growing tremendously and the rate of community spread, which is really concerning to me, is as high as it's been as well. And what is community spread? That just means it's people who don't know where they got it. They can't trace it back to a family member, a coworker, or anything else particularly. So they're just getting it from being out. And that's a huge concern because now we're seeing, we're seeing the capacity at the hospital get close to to the top. They have the ability to add some more beds, but I know that they are a little bit concerned. So the best thing we can do, even though the governor's made it clear he's not going to force people to do it, what we can do is we can really, really urge all of y'all to please protect yourselves, please wear facial coverings. The data out there, the percentage that's out there for people that wear facial coverings when the other individual is wearing facial covering is over 90%. So that's one of the best things you can do. Obviously, the best thing you can do is stay home unless you need to go somewhere. But really, I just want everybody to understand how serious things are at this point in time. They are getting worse. They're not getting better. So when you're out there, please proceed with caution and try and protect yourself and realize that you are putting yourself at risk whenever you go out there. So if you don't have to do it, don't do it. Thanks.
You know, I would just say one other thing and that is that the most recent literature coming out is repetitively telling us that although facial coverings were initially felt to be a little bit important, they're actually very important. And as the mayor just said, it's looking very much and being proven scientifically that the facial coverings are very important. And it doesn't have to be a fancy mask or something special. It can be a bandana or so on and so forth. So remind each other, remind your friends. Don't fall prey to the temptation of looking at a facial covering as a political statement. It's a statement of safety for yourself and the people that you love.
And I like to also add that, you know, while we can't make masks mandatory, local businesses can for their own businesses. So I encourage them to institute those policies and make sure that they're protecting their employees and the customers that go in there.
And I've been really wanting to say this. If you're a business owner and you have a policy for no shoes, no shirts, no service, you know, just like that, you can very easily have your store have a policy for the same thing. Thank you.
And I just noticed that somebody in the chat was saying that they are not comfortable because of HIPAA laws, you know, telling coworkers what they have and whatnot. But I just want to remind people that HIPAA law is one thing, but when you have an infectious disease and you're exposing other people in the public, that's a completely different story. And while the city does protect your information, we don't say who you are, where you live, anything like that. We are very, very careful with your information. As a matter of fact, we don't even get that information. But this is an infectious disease that is potentially fatal and that makes it a completely different horse of a different story.
And Commissioner Tetro, thank you for bringing up HIPAA. We want to show the public that we have been very big on HIPAA protections. Even the way we design many of our activities are for that very same reason. So we want the public to have the full confidence that our aim is to bring down the rates of COVID, to keep hospitalization rates at a manageable rate and to try and lower or keep any case fatality rate at a very low rate. So those are our aims and everything else that we're doing within the confines of HIPAA, we're working very hard to protect people's identity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next, we have consent agenda items, one through four.
I'll move that we accept. Well, first, can we take number three out of order or take it out of it? And then I'll move that we accept the rest of the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion to accept consent agenda without item three. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Go ahead and take up item three then.
I'll go ahead and read that. Agenda item number three, approval on second and final reading on ordinance number 235-2019-068PO to reason from dwelling G to apartment G for lot 26, block one, St. Tropez subdivision, Cameron County, Texas, located at 2521 Oak Forest Road with a conditional overlay.
And so at the last meeting, Commissioner Tetro had asked for the commission to request additional buffer than what was already provided in the guidances. I was the only one who said nay and I would like to preserve that objection.
Okay, very good, Commissioner Golansky.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the item. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Me.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
For the record, we did put Commissioner Golansky's name. We'll move on to the next agenda item, items for individual consideration. Consideration and action to approve resolution number 2020-063 to remove and donate the Jefferson Davis monument located at Washington Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and
Yeah, after discussion, I'm going to
Sure, okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Neese, do you want to take it up now or after?
Yes, I'd like to take it up now before the vote.
Absolutely.
So I've done a lot of work on this, including meeting with the different stakeholders. And recent research came up with this Senate Journal. Matter of fact, William Strong from the University of Texas and I were discussing this. And it seems pretty clear in that little squared off area that the monument was donated to the state of Texas, not the city of Brownsville, as a marker for that highway that they were trying to develop and they were trying to recognize. So I feel very strongly that it's not the city's marker. And I also feel very strongly that it should be removed. So in order to determine the ownership, I believe because of everything that's going on, it should be removed. But donated, I don't think we can do that because I don't think we own it. So I would recommend or make a motion to amend that we remove it and allow the city manager to determine the ownership and then we can decide what to do with it.
Commissioner Neese, would your suggested amendment then be to remove it immediately though or as soon as possible?
Of course.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. I just wanted to clarify because last, you know, this has been lingering for a while and I know that House Commission may have discussed removing it as well. I just want to make sure that that to clarify that you didn't want it. Your proposed amendment includes removing it immediately. So, okay, very good.
And then barring the determination of the actual ownership to then, then we can follow up with what can be done with it. But yeah, immediately remove it and then let the city manager determine the ownership. Then, you know, we can come back or we can even authorize him to dispose of it. But I think that the commission ought to have that decision.
Well, at that point, you're saying that your proposed amendment would be to let the city manager decide ownership and disposition?
Yeah, because there was a previous legal opinion that it was the city's. But I don't think that the Senate Journal was ever brought to our attention and Dr. Strong found it and I think it should be considered by us. And if you read that little part, you can see it was a gift. So
Commissioner, I actually, thank you for sending me that earlier today. I actually reviewed it and that's the best case I've seen so far for ownership. You know, so I think that's still to be determined, but I do strongly believe it should be removed as soon as practical. So Commissioner Gowen, this is your motion. Would you
So I agree with, I agree and accept Commissioner Neese's amendment of the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with a proposed amendment from Commissioner Neese. Do I have a second on that?
May I have clarification though? So then remove it immediately, but then the city manager decides on the disposition or that was unclear to me.
Yes, and it should be held in a safe location because we've already seen it just got defaced again. So if it is the state, then we should at least protect it on behalf of the state. And if we decide, if they decide, hey, we want that plaque back, then let them come and get it. But in the meantime, we're safeguarding it and it's out of the public view.
I'm just curious, though, why are you leaving the decision to the city manager? Like, even if, say, it goes, if it goes to, if it turns out that the city is the owner because of adverse possession, it's been in the city's possession for well over 90 years. Then what? The city manager decides who to give it to?
It wasn't in the city's possession. It was a marker on the highway up until 1976 or 1977. And then we don't know if the city had any authority to move it. So in effect, we may have stolen it from the state and put it on our own park property. So these are issues that the city manager in conjunction with the city attorney should be able to determine who the rightful owner, now that we have more information and they can speak to the state. And in the meantime, it's out of view and whatever it stood for is no longer a public comment by our city as was mentioned during the comments. But I don't, adverse possession applies to real property. Okay, I don't know. I don't think it applies to personal property. It's more like at this point, possibly a theft if anything. So
Commissioner, if I may, and just to be clear, maybe this addresses Commissioner Golansky's question. This information came very late in the game. I did contact the law firm that originally gave the city this opinion back in 2018. They were surprised by the existence of this document, but it clearly weighs in favor of this item actually belonging to the state of Texas. If that is indeed the case, then all we could possibly do is either give it back to them and if they don't want it, then dispose of it. So maybe allowing this authority to the city manager allows us to move in a swifter manner in getting this matter resolved. It seems from your opinions here today and what we heard from the community, that's the intent. So that is what we have from legal at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do I have on the amended motion?
I have, I have a question. So we're going to make the motion. We're going to do this and am I on mute? Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, so where is the rock going to go and when is it going to go? Is it leaving tomorrow morning?
So I think we can leave the rock there, has been mentioned, and remove the plaque. That's the offensive part of this of this object. And I would say that we can come back and visit because I would I would urge that we replace that plaque with a plaque dedicated to the Buffalo soldiers who suffered at the hands of the government and the city and everyone else. And that might be appropriate replacement for that plaque.
That changes it because my understanding and I think Commissioner Gowen's understanding was that the entire, your amended motion including moving the entire monument itself, not just a plaque. So
I think, yes. And I think that unless you're ready to replace it with a new plaque immediately, it's going to keep getting defaced even without the plaque because it's still going to be remembered as holding the old plaques. I think it should be removed. I think it should be removed and cleaned and preserved or whatever in terms of the rock itself. I think it should be removed and cleaned and preserved or whatever in terms of the rock itself. And then, and city management be directed to come back to us in, I don't know, let's see, 30 days or six weeks or something specific, and with a report on ownership and their best recommendations for disposition.
There's no issue with me on that, but that's gonna take a lot longer than a few days, I would think, because it weighs tons. Anywhere between five to 15 tons from what I read. But that's fine. If you want to remove the whole thing, that doesn't affect my amendment.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Gowen, then you want to clarify that your amendment then is to move the entire monument?
Well, if that's what it's gonna take to get a second, then yes.
Okay.
So--
Very good.
So, city management, when would the rock be moved? Just for public interest and because the public has a lot of energy invested into this. When would the rock be moved and where would it go?
I don't think there's an answer for that yet. I think city management has to figure that out very quickly.
We have a plan in place. I guess for security purposes, it may be best just to leave it at that, but we have a plan. We've been on standby, and the word immediately would mean that we will remove it as immediately as we can. So we do, I'd be happy to share, but I just, we want to make sure that this is done swiftly and also done without additional extracurricular activity, so to speak. So we do have a plan, and I will assure you that this will be replaced with, removed, I'm sorry, within 24 hours.
Okay, very good. So then, Commissioner Gowen, you have your motion. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Wait, just one last clarification. So then, at this point, is it so that the city manager's gonna come back to report to us whenever he finds out, decides ownership? Or-- Does it go as far as he decides?
I don't think that's required, but if he wants to bring that up and let us know, he can either update us through a meeting or personally. I don't think it really matters.
So are we voting on the amended motion?
Yes.
To remove and investigate ownership, right?
Correct. Is that understanding, Commissioner Gowen?
That is my understanding.
So then the motion itself is to, is to move the, is to remove the monument and clean the plaque immediately, and then have the city manager decide ownership. In the meantime, it'll be stored by the city. And we have a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Neese, for finding or bringing those items to our attention.
Action item number two, consideration and action on resolution number 2020-061 in support of a cultural district designation application to the Texas Commission of the Arts.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. This is a simple resolution in support. We know that the Midi Cultural District, the Midi Cultural District wants to move forward with an application if they do it this year or if they do it next year. But in case they want to do it this year, we have this resolution of support from the city, and so staff recommends approval. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Anybody have any questions for Ramino?
I have a question. Has, has the Midi Cultural District, not the foundation, organized as a nonprofit?
It is my understanding, Commissioner Neese, that they are officially a 501(c)(3).
Okay, good.
They weren't, they weren't a couple of years ago, but now they are.
They are now, good. Are they, have they in fact made an application to the state for the cultural district designation?
Actually, Commissioner, I know the answer to that. Not, they have not yet. The applications are due every June because they're trying to build some consensus within some of the, with some of the stakeholders and also figure out the boundary lines that might work with the state. Their intent is to wait till next year. They were not gonna be able to do it by the end of this month.
Yeah, it was, no, it's actually yesterday was the deadline.
Okay.
All right, those were my questions, thank you.
Sure.
I'll move to approve the support letter.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Action item number three, consideration and action on the Seventh Amendment Declaration of Local Disaster for Public Health Emergency.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. I will go over them as I usually do. This is the seventh amended local measures. As you're aware, the most recent governor's order, executive orders, GA-26, it's relating to the expanded opening of Texas in response to COVID-19 disaster, which was issued by the governor of the state of Texas on June 3, 2020. The following measures, and I'll go over the changes in the measures given the latest executive order in addition to different Phase Ones of reopening plan that the city is proposing for your feedback. So restaurants can operate at up to 75% of the total listed occupancy of the restaurant. Indoor bars and similar indoor establishments are allowed to operate at 50%. In-store non-CISA retail services, which is just retail establishments, can operate at up to 50%. Shopping malls may operate at up to 50%. Cosmetology salons, hair salons, barber shops, nail shops, counting salons must still comply, of course, with their, the Texas Occupations Code and still ensure the six feet of social distancing between operating workstations. Office workers may operate up to 50% in addition to manufacturing services. Gyms and exercise facilities and classes may operate up to 50%. Person care and beauty services, such tattoo studios, piercing studios, hair removal services, and hair loss treatment, and all those types of businesses do still need to ensure at least six feet of social distancing between workstations. Bingo halls and bowling alleys may operate up to 50% of occupancy. There should be still six feet of social distancing between operating lanes. All employees and residents of nursing homes, state-supported living centers, assisted living facilities, and long-term care facilities shall wear a fabric-based covering or mask except as otherwise ordered by the city health authority. The city health department has added two additional points in accordance with Section 81.02 of the Texas Health and Safety Code. The City of Brownsville Health Authority and Acting Health Officer issued an Order Control Directive on June 12, 2020, requiring all nursing homes and long-term facilities to follow said directive. Nursing homes and long-term facilities must establish employee reentry plans for COVID-19 in accordance with the CDC guidelines and regularly test their employees to reduce the risk of COVID-19 within their facility. The Emergency Operations Center Plan should be updated to reflect compliance on this matter. The City of Brownsville Department of Health and Wellness is developing an employee testing plan to begin testing all city employees, starting with our frontline employees, and developing a rotating schedule of testing. City library indoor facilities are to remain close to the public. The library will begin Phase One of the reopening plan, including the following: library curbside service, continuity of virtual library activities, and kids crafts on the go beginning June 22, 2020. The city may host youth programs as public health indicators follow with restricted piloted safety measures as determined by the parks operations manager and city administration and strict compliance with city requirements and the terms required by the Texas Department of State Health Services. City-operated public outdoor swimming pool facilities will begin Phase One of their reopening plan, beginning with initial pilot phase where outdoor swimming pools may operate at up to 25% of normal operating limits and no more than one to eight ratio, instructor to swimmer ratio is adhered to. Temperature checks will be required as employees and visitors enter the facility in addition to other measures as determined by the reopening plan. Also, in strict compliance with Texas Department of State Health Services and Center for Disease Control. Private swimming pool facilities are open and they are allowed to operate at 50%. All City of Brownsville residents are strongly encouraged to use online services and drive-through services while conducting businesses with the city. City facilities with drive-through services include city secretaries, municipal court, planning and redevelopment, and health and wellness department. Furthermore, all employees and persons entering city government offices and facilities shall wear a facial covering or mask. The City of Brownsville Internal Services Department is developing a facility retrofitting proposal including areas that can be modified or retrofitted in existing city facilities to help minimize the spread of COVID-19. For example, changing doors to open automatic touchless. These items will be ranked and based on priority and need. Another example can be contactless payments. B metros continue to implement social distancing measures in their buses. No more than 16 individuals may ride a bus at one time and facial coverings are required at all times. City events are canceled until further notice unless otherwise authorized on individual pilot basis as public health, depending on public health indicators, such as the Independence Day, Fourth of July, 21st Salute to Freedom Drive-In Fireworks Show at the Brownsville Sports Park. All services shall be provided in strict compliance with the terms required by Texas Department of State Health Services. General, public, and private community events are canceled until further notice unless otherwise authorized on individualized pilot basis in city facilities in compliance with Phase One reopening restricted measures as determined by the facility manager and city administration. Unless otherwise stated, these measures shall be in place until July 7 of 2020. And I'd also just like a quick reminder that the city has initiated a face mask design challenge. So we do want to encourage the public, all different ages, to participate in that challenge. Go to btxcares.com and we will be, if you, the contest is until June 23. And you will be, there will be some winners, $50 gift certificate to your favorite Brownsville restaurant. And the winners will be announced by the mayor and commissioners. Thank you so much.
Helen, I have a question. Did you say kids crafts on the go? And if so, what is that?
And I'm going to defer to the library director to please state what that is.
Hello, Commissioners. What we're gonna do is we have pre-made craft kits. They will be bagged. And just like when you pick up books at curbside service, which will be bagged and will be provided to the individual without them getting out of their cars with no direct interaction with our staff other than handing, those kits which have been pre-cleaned, have been created and pre-cleaned and also stored for, in this case, up to three to four weeks because we've been working on them for a long period of time, so they're well beyond any potential contamination period. But we do sanitize them before we even bag them. And those are just simple craft kits like those that we do in the library during our programs with young children that we're still making available to help parents out to be able to pick up something from the library for their kids.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Helen, I have a question about the July 4 event. Is that something we can still consider? Because I do have some concerns about being able to ensure that everybody stays in the vehicle and making sure that individuals don't congregate. So I do have some genuine concerns about that and how we're gonna be able to do that if we have a lot of people in some sort of drive-through event. Because I'm certain that people are gonna want to go out, come outside, and I don't know if we have enough personnel to be able to ensure that individuals are complying with distancing requirements and facial coverings or other things that we would be concerned about. So I do have genuine concerns about that. So I like everything on here. I'm just wondering about that particular item, whether that's something we can revisit if necessary if we continue to see the cases as they are.
Yes, yes, Mayor, we can revisit that. And we could also come up with a more detailed description of how we see it can, you know, how we feel it can work and bring that to the city commission. And if you, and if we, of course, do not, if we all do not feel comfortable having that, we won't have the event. But what we would, let us come back and come up with a more detailed plan. We talked about spacing between vehicles, having people stay in their car, and traffic control and those measures. But let us get more in detail, and then we do have time and then seek your guidance.
Yes, please, because as a city, one of the few things we can still do, and the thing we still have the authority to do is control our own facilities and control our own events. The last thing I want is to be promoting an event that has a lot of people, where we're contributing to community spread. You know, I just think that if we can control it and we can ensure that it doesn't happen or that people are 100% safe, then I'd consider it. Otherwise, I just don't, don't want to do it.
Okay, well, we'll get it, we'll go ahead and work on a plan and send it to you quickly and obtain your feedback on that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great work, Helen. Thank you so much for, I know you put a lot of time and effort into this. And Renee, I know that you help review some of this stuff as well, so thanks. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the new declaration? Okay. Any motions?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Next, we have action item number four, consideration and action to create an equity task force.
So if I may take the liberty of presenting it. I've been in discussion with Dr. Gowen, Commissioner Gowen, and Commissioner Cowan. And the idea behind it was basically to try to create more equity within the city, the services that are offered and stuff. Commissioner Cowan was very helpful in providing a reference point to what the city of Austin is doing, their strategic performance dashboard. And it has different areas in which they evaluate whether or not there's equity. I thought of it more in terms of the Southmost Public Library just doesn't quite get the same foot traffic as a central public library. And so I would like for that to be considered, especially now with the board appointments. I would like to have more representation for people to look out for the Southmost Public Library and make sure of that. Also, like in terms of fire station, there's, District 1 only has one fire station to cover our whole area. And those are the kinds of things that I would like independent eyes to look at and maybe provide recommendations as to how we need to be delivering services more equally throughout our population in Brownsville. And so, if Dr. Gowen, you would like to add something?
Wholeheartedly support always important to consider equity because as soon as we stop keeping it on the front dashboard, we tend to lag a bit at times. So very excited to support this initiative.
Hey, great. Do we have any additional discussion? You have a motion?
So just like all the other task forces that we've created, if then maybe at the next meeting, we can start each appointing someone that we want to represent our respective areas and then have them work through what they want to be their scope of work. So, but that would be my motion to at least start, accept the idea of creating an equity task force.
Okay, so at this point, Commissioner, then we would create it through commission action, then would it be okay if we submitted our appointees to the city secretary through email? Is that okay?
Sure, that works.
And if for some reason there's any pending, then we can take it up at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And you're making that motion, Commissioner Goloski?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Action item number five, consideration and action to rescind awarded contract to R.E. Frederick's Company for the Brownsville Community Resource Center Senior Center project.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. We present this item to rescind the contract. The contractor pulled, withdrew their bid upon their request after further review with the architect, and the architect is-- And the architect is on the call. If you have any questions for him about this item. Who is Mr. Juan Mojica Jr. from Gignac, which is probably pronounced improperly.
The only question I had was what was the difference in the amount of the contracts? I couldn't find that in the packet, and if it's in there, I apologize. But I saw that the first contract, or the contractor that we hit awarded the contract to withdrew. And this is a secondary bidder, the next highest or the next best value. But I don't, I couldn't tell what the difference in pricing was. And the difference in pricing, where is that money going to come from?
I'll answer the last part, and then I'll let the architect answer the first part. We have the fund for subdivision park fees that we did the match from, and there is sufficient funding in there for the overage. So that part is allowable there. And then I'll let Mr. Mojica answer the rest, the first part of your question.
Yes, hello. Can you guys hear me?
I'm not over, but I gotta get up.
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. Good evening. My name is, it was mentioned, my name is Juan Mojica Jr.
Not that kind.
With Gignac Architects. So to answer the original question, or the first question rather, RE Fredericks Company's base bid was for $510,000. But they later informed us that they did not include a good portion of the, well, actually all of the kitchen equipment that is part of the base bid that they were supposed to have included. And H2O Construction was the sole contractor who actually included that kitchen equipment. Their bid is at $675,855, which is a difference of $165,855. So it's about the kitchen equipment, we believe, around $20,000. So, and the average amount, we believe, that is a fair amount for the kitchen equipment. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, sir. It does. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, do you have a motion?
Damaris is still, I'm just curious, who's this senior citizen center open to? Like, I've always driven by there because I like the tortillera, like across the street, but I had no idea that was going on in there. So like, who's going to benefit from, or who's, who can be eligible to use this facility?
So this is a multi-use facility. So we've got some, some of the building has already been renovated, and that is currently occupied via lease through, by K-Cost and STIVA. And they provide services to veterans, STIVA, and K-Cost provides utility assistance. So there is some space for like a community center resource for a variety of activities. The building that is being renovated, which is the old cafeteria and some subsequent office space, will turn into the senior center. And that will be for, the Parks and Recreation Department is the end user. But from the very beginning, we had a collaboration through the Senior Advocacy Coalition, some partnerships with the Brownsville Wellness Coalition, reaching out possibly even to BISD. Because this kitchen is intended to help also with micro businesses and those who are doing their gardening to, or candle making, so that they can use a commercial kitchen to sell their products and, you know, scale up in their businesses or even start from a catering component. So it will be available to not only seniors to come and do activities, but from an economic development standpoint, before taking a huge step into a brick and mortar building, you can utilize this resource, slowly start building your equity for those who want to do that through, in partnership with the city and other, and our partners as well.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking.
I'll move to rescind the contract.
Do you have a motion? To rescind the contract with RE Fredericks? Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Next, we have action item number six, consideration and action to order contract for the Brownsville Community Resource Center Senior Center project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, H2O Construction Services, Inc., in the amount of $675,855,000.
As mentioned before in the previous item, the most responsible, responsive bidder that did include the kitchen equipment in the base bid was H2O Construction Services, Inc. This project will be monitored with, through our engineering department and, of course, the end user. It's also through grants. So we have a great team who helps to monitor our projects that way and then also process through our finance department. And we do have the Mr. Juan Mojica Jr. on the line as well. If there's any further questions, we do recommend award, and there is sufficient funding as budgeted.
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I have a question, but I might second it depending on the answering of my question.
Okay. Before the question, does anybody else that would second it?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, Commissioner, what's your question?
Thank you. So on the attachment that says, like the bid tabulations, and I don't know who this question is directed to, but H2O is the most expensive. Is that because the others did not include the kitchen equipment, but then H2O did? And then also, because it seems like that the original bids were from three years ago, and that's why they had to redo it, because the cost of labor and parts went up? So did they repost it, publish again, and then get new submissions or not?
I'll clarify the part of your question, and then I'll let Mr. Mojica Jr. answer any further ones. So the original estimate was done several years ago when the original, when the building that is already constructed was done. And that was for the grant application purposes. The bid did not happen. The bid, we went through this process. It was just awarded in March, I believe. And so that did go through, and Gignac did provide their estimate, which was in about alignment with this. I'll let him speak to those exact numbers. So, but just to answer your question, it wasn't awarded prior, previously before that for the bid. And the major discrepancy was the kitchen equipment itemized as part of the base bid. Yes.
And so this is...
Sorry. So do the other entities' numbers not include the kitchen supply, kitchen equipment?
This is Juan Mojica. And some of that discussion was that, no, they did not. There was one contractor that included an allowance, but it wasn't enough to cover the entire kitchen equipment. For some reason, the other contractors did not, but H2O did. And during the motion, all this stuff, this was discussed in the pre-bid conference. And then there was no inquiries that actually came up during the bidding process, which is typical of any procurement method like this. But there was at least two contractors that included some of it, although one of them only had an allowance, and H2O included all of the kitchen equipment.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're very welcome.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have action item number seven, consideration and action on renewal of term contract for excavation, loading, and hauling services for the city of Brownsville as budgeted. Contract number HDS-30-0418.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioners. This contract is for the dirt hauling at the landfill. This is for the daily cover. This is the second of the two extensions, so it actually will be the last time we can award this. The company has agreed to free soil prices, so there's no increasing price. And after this year, we would have to go off for re-bids. Any questions?
So how, has the city been working with this company for many years? Because it said that it's the first of a two-year extension, but what was the length of the original contract?
The statement where it says the first of two extensions is actually an error. It is the second of two extensions. The original contract was for one year, and which was awarded in 2018. And after the first year, it was awarded for the second year, or actually the first extension. And this is the second extension, which is the third year, and it's the final year.
Okay. Then I'll, but, and you're satisfied with their performance in the past, correct?
Oh, yes, yes. And we use them, and like I said, they do bring out soil to the landfill. They've been performing very well, and they have agreed to maintain their prices for the next year. So it's worth awarding and not having to go off for re-bids.
Great. Then I'll move to approve.
Motion's approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Next, we have action item number eight, consideration and action on resolution number 2020-057, authorizing in accordance with section 26.04(c)(1) of the Texas Tax Code that a city officer or employee calculate the voter approval tax rate for tax year 2020 in the manner provided for a special tax community at 8%.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Go to the next page, please. Under Senate Bill Two, which became effective this year, the main item on this one is the lowering of the property tax rate before requiring an adopted voter approval decrease from 8% to 3%. The little snapshot that we have there, this is a sample of a what-if scenario that we showed during the budget process last year, in which you have, we have, you have two rates to be calculated, the effective tax rate, which is a lower rate there, and then rollback rate. The rollback rate is the rate that, that's the maximum rate that we could adopt. Putting in the what-if factor or the Senate Bill Two, that rate came from 8% and actually lowered down to 3.5%. This is just as a point of reference, that we may have similar circumstances this year. And I'll go next page, please. So some of the new terminology under Senate Bill before, again, it was called the effective tax rate. In order to have a little bit more clarification on the language, now it's called the no-new revenue tax rate. This rate is basically the rate that will provide the same amount of revenue to a city on properties taxed the both years. The next set of rates was the, excuse me, the rollback rate. The new language is now called the voter-approved tax rate. The most significant matter on this one, again, instead of bringing, having the 8% above the effective rate, it actually decreased it to 3.5%. And this is a maximum rate allowed without voter approval for the maintenance and operation growth on existing values. Again, existing values, not current values, but existing values. Next slide, please. Again, this is just further under, pre-Senate Bill Two. Again, the maximum rate was 8%. And at this point, voters could petition for a rollback rate. The city never came close to the 8% or do we ever go above the 8%? But if we had, it would be up to the voters to petition for the rollback rate. With the post-Senate Bill Two, the voters have to approve any rate above the 3.5% for maintenance and operation. And unlike the past, prior to Senate Bill Two, this automatically triggers an election for the city. Next slide, please. Why are we here? Under Senate Bill Two, there includes language to allow cities to allow the computation of matter like special units at 8% instead of going from 3% to bring it up to 3.5%. This is in case there's a disaster declared in your area. On March 13, as we were, 2020, Governor declared a disaster area because of related COVID-2019 pandemic. This is important because this provision provides that during a disaster, there is a revenue impact to the community. And that revenue impact provides for an opportunity to raise that cap from 3.5% to 8% by approval of a resolution that's before you. Next slide, please. For fiscal year 21 outlook, preliminary appraisal values that we've got from the appraisal district, it appears that right now, the total increase of $571 million or 7.11% for the previous tax years primarily attributed to commercial properties. Again, this is the second year. If we recall, last year, we had an increase because of property valuations. This is year two, which we anticipated that this would happen. The issue here is that now we're contending, we're contending with the 3.5% cap unless we go ahead and approve the resolution. Based on the preliminary values, it is highly likely the financial taxable value growth for appraised values will exceed the 3.5% cap under the SB Two. Historically, city increase, existing city properties has been both under the 8% and 3.5%. The city has never actually, besides last year, which we went up to 6.5% or so, the time the city has actually increased has been under 2% the majority of the times. Again, going back to 2019, the Cameron Appraisal District tried, started reappraising commercial properties. This is year two of those reappraisal of the properties. And this is in line with the controller's requirement of the property value study. Next page, please. In summary, staff currently is developing an analysis for fiscal year 21 revenue projections, which likely will reflect decreases in revenues. By approving this resolution, the city retains the flexibility to adopt a property tax rate above the 3.5% to help offset revenue declines. Approval of the voter-approved tax rate resolution does not commit the city commission to any tax rate. It allows staff to present various tax scenarios for consideration as part of fiscal year 21 budget process. The property tax rate calculation is scheduled to be presented to the city commission on August 4th, and the hearings and approval is scheduled for August 18th. In summary, all this does is give us an opportunity to run the numbers, that allows to run the numbers above the 3.5% cap by approving this resolution. Have any questions?
So this resolution is not tying us into an 8% increase at this point. It just gives you the option to come back to us and say, within the 3.5% to 8%, we're recommending another half a percent or something like that. Is that correct?
That is correct. It just runs scenarios for consideration.
Hey, Lupa, this is John. You know, I think we have to look at all options, but I have yet to see any proposal from the city on potential cost cutting. You know, every business in Brownsville has gone through an exercise on reducing costs in light of our situation. So I think the answer here is not to go out and hold our taxes high, which are very, you know, our tax rate is very high in comparison to the other cities in the valley. I think it is an opportunity to look at our tax rate and see what we can do to help, you know, people in Brownsville, especially businesses.
Amen, John. That's all I'm going to say. I'm with you on that one.
So do you want to move the table this until they come back with some cost-cutting measures?
I think we have to approve this in order to give, for them to proceed with looking at all options.
Okay. So going back to that, it doesn't set, it doesn't set any tax rate, but it gives them an option.
By not doing this, they cannot look at other options. Going above the 3.5%.
And just to clarify then, if the commission were to go above 3.5%, even though we have been declared a disaster, does that require voter approval or it does not? My understanding is it would not, but can you clarify, Lupa?
It would not as long as we pass this resolution.
Okay. All right. But the tax rate's still going to be adopted by the commission at a later date, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I was over here talking to myself. I'll second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Me, nay.
Okay. One nay. Motion passes, thank you. So, Lupa, you know, your directive is to try and see where you can cut and, and try to make sure that we don't necessarily pass this on to the taxpayer unless it's absolutely necessary in certain areas, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a board appointment. The first one we have is consideration and action on resolution number 2020-044 to appoint, reappoint members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Committee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. We have a reappointment available for Mr. Joe Lee Rubio, who has expressed interest in continuing his term. There are other applicants who have applied. And I think the list was on the previous slide.
I would move to reappoint Mr. Rubio, if I can get a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a consideration and action on resolution number 2020-046 to appoint a member to the Brownsville Public Library System Advisory Board.
If I may confirm with the city secretary, there was a late application from Celia Flores Fiest from District One.
I'll have to check, ma'am.
I would ask that, with a, I don't know how many openings there are, but District One and District Four are underrepresented, and in the past, I've been concerned that not enough attention is being focused on the Southmost Library, so I would ask that we consider District One appointees to, to represent the Southmost Public Library.
How many appointments are open?
There's one, one appointment based on resignation, and we have five applicants on file, one appointment vacancy.
Okay, and also, from what I'm seeing, there's nine members on this particular board, do we need nine members?
Yes.
That would be for another item, but I would say that I have two from my district, so I would defer to District One for a motion.
I agree.
There's nobody on there from District One.
Well, that's why Commissioner Gloss is asking about, about Ms. Fiest.
Yeah.
We can confirm that. If, if not...
Should we table, should we table the item?
We do have an application for Celia Flores Fiest.
Okay.
Great, thank you, she's my, oh, I would like to appoint her.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second for Celia Flores Fiest. Any further discussion? Those in, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a consideration action on resolution number 2020-052 to appoint or reappoint members to the Board of Adjustment.
Good afternoon, City Commission. This is Mirna Leal with the Planning and Redevelopment Department. We do have one vacancy. The board member does desire reappointment, but we also have quite a few applicants. We have eight applicants as well that have applied for the position. The Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board that seeks, sees variances, special exceptions, and appeals for chapter 348, our zoning ordinance, or chapter...
There's no one from District One, but I don't think there's any applicants either.
Yes, we can hear you.
So...
What I'm curious about here though is how many people are you trying to get, or how many appointments are necessary, because it was hard to tell on the spreadsheet, because it looks like the only individual that's coming off is, is Roy, and he has applied, unless there's other individuals, because I don't see that anybody else is coming off.
We only have, Mr. De Los Santos's position is the only one that has expired, his term has expired. He did reapply, but so did seven other people. So we've got in total eight applicants and one position to fill. This is, Texas Local Government Code requires that the Board of Adjustment have a minimum of five board members, and we have four alternates.
I would be very comfortable reappointing Roy De Los Santos, he knows as a function of the board, of the, the functionality of the board very, very well, and he would clearly represent District Three.
All right, and there's no other point, there's no, nobody else from District Three on the board, so, do we have a second for Roy?
Second.
Yes.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have consideration action on resolution number 2020-051 to appoint or reappoint members to the Transit Advisory Committee.
I would move to appoint Gregorio Rincones, because he's the one, the only one who expressed that he actually uses the bus service, so.
Second.
Who was that, Commissioner Gloss, I didn't get his last... Okay, the, this, the individual that you had appointed previously, Commissioner, from your district, did she resign? What, is that my understanding? That's why we have a vacancy?
Yes, she was, she had to resign due to personal reasons. She wasn't able to stay on the board. Regrettably, she had to resign, and so that opened, reopened her seat, or her position.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion for Gregorio Rincones, do I have a second?
Norma, was he the one who took the paratransit position that became...
Yes, Gregorio is a current one, currently one of the, the users of our paratransit service.
Oh, great, okay, good, yes, please. Yeah.
I'll second that.
A second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have consideration action on resolution number 2020-055 to appoint or reappoint members to the Main Street Advisory Board.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. This is Miriam Suarez, Downtown District Manager and Board Liaison for Main Street Advisory Board. Tonight, we are requesting to appoint or reappoint six members to the board. We've received 17 applications from the public for your consideration. The positions that need to be filled are highlighted in yellow. However, I apologize that this slide does not include the vacant position left by Mayor Mendez when he was elected to the City Commission, but we are asking for six appointments or reappointments. Please note that current board members, Ms. Angelina Macias and Mrs. Estela wish to be reappointed, and I might have to answer any questions.
I would also note that I don't recall ever being asked if I wanted to serve again, but I obviously do since it's in District Four.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Commissioner, because I saw on the, on the chart, it showed that you didn't want to, that you were not willing to serve. So you are, is that correct?
I am.
Okay, and then, Miriam, you said that Angelina and who else has reapplied?
I'm Angelina and Estela Vazquez, Angelina Macias and Estela Vazquez wish to be reappointed as well.
Is it Valdez or Vazquez?
Oh, Valdez, sorry, yes.
Because I don't see Estela Valdez's name on the applicants. Oh, was that...
There isn't an application on file, but she has expressed interest in being reappointed.
Okay, because my understanding was she, I, I know her well, and I don't know if she was wanting to get reappointed, so I think if she wanted to, she would have applied.
Okay.
Okay, so, how many openings do we have?
Six.
Okay.
I'll move for Wesley Reed.
A second.
We have a motion and a second for Wesley Reed, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. I would make a motion then to reappoint Angelina Macias and Commissioner Nies to the board.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'll move to appoint Vanessa Sandolala of District One.
We have a motion to appoint Vanessa Sandolala, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. So that's four.
I'll move to appoint Ian Buen Rosso.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Ian Buen Rosso and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I'll make a motion to appoint Daniela Loera.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
Aye, or sorry.
Those in favor? We have one.
Aye.
Those in favor, aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, so we got our six, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a consideration and action on resolution number 2020-056 to appoint or reappoint members to the Historic Preservation and Design Review Board.
How many members?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, this is Juan Velez. You have to appoint three board members, two have shown their interest to be reappointed. Those are Larry Love as an historical architect, and Philip Saponaro, that is an historian and works for the UTIGV. And then there's also a third position. If you see in the, in the other list, please, could you, could you pass the, the slide, please? That's it. The other candidate that, that also meets the requirement of the Texas Historical Commission and our own regulations would be Luis Murillo, he's an architect and he works for B.C. Worship. Now, naturally, it's up to you what you want to, who do you want to appoint.
Mr. Velez, I do have a question on the chart. It shows that Calvin Walker, Rolando Garza, and Terapeuta, and Mr. Rodriguez all expired in 2019, is that a mistake on this, on the sheet?
No, supposedly, yeah, supposedly, the, the list, I mean, they, they, their positions expire on, on May 21. Indeed, they were, the last year were reappointed by, by yourselves.
Okay.
So unfortunately, we didn't, let us say, update the data, but you reappointed the, the second of July. Commissioner Nies appointed, move, move the, the positions for these four members.
Okay.
So, so I think Rolando Garza would be a good, I, I don't know, did he express an intention not to...
Yeah, sorry, sorry, the, the positions that have to be reappointed are those that Philip Saponaro, Larry Love, and Shannon Ostus occupied in the past. Could you go to the previous...
Got it.
So then Larry, Larry Love and Philip Saponaro would be up for reappointment. Shannon Ostus did not want to continue, and Juan says that Luis Murillo is, is an applicant who is qualified based on the, the guidelines from the Historical Commission.
He's a bachelor architect, and I think that he could, he could maybe do a good job here, but it's up to you.
I would move to...
So I would make the motion.
Mr. Love.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's the easiest vote all day.
You, you, sorry, so do you, what about the other candidates?
I'll make a motion to re... I'm sorry? To reappoint Philip Saponaro.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second for Philip Saponaro, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
For Shannon's spot, I would recommend Mr. Murillo, Luis, or I would move to nominate him.
Okay, very good, we have a motion to appoint Luis Murillo as the last member. Do we have a second?
Did that remove everybody from District Two?
No, Calvin Walker belongs to District Two, so he stays.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second for Luis Murillo, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Juan.
Next, we have consideration and action on resolution number 2020-053 to appoint or reappoint members to the Building and Standards Commission.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner.
Although I was not in favor of the policy change of being on one, more than one board, is, is Mr. De Los Santos excluded based on that policy? Or was that a task force he was appointed to earlier?
He was appointed to the, gosh...
Board of Adjustments. I spoke to him on Friday, and he said that he would prefer to be on the Board of Adjustments and not in Building and Standards.
Yeah, because I didn't see him actually reapply for Building and Standards, so I don't think he's even up. At least I didn't see his name on the list for applications.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, this is Mirna Leal, I'm the Board Liaison for the Building and Standards Commission as well as the Board of Adjustment. Mr. De Los Santos, he did serve on both the Building and Standards Commission and the Board of Adjustment. Because the Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board, the term or the, the limits were excused so long as they were able to complete that, and then once their term was completed, then they would have to select one single board. I think there was some other boards as well that, that had that, but Mr. De Los Santos did reapply only for the Board of Adjustment, which he was just reappointed for. He did let me know that he would rather be on that than the Building and Standards Commission. So currently, we have three vacant positions, the one that belonged to Mr. De Los Santos and two other ones. Mr. Fabriel Cisneros, whose term did expire, has expressed interest in, in being reappointed, and we have three applicants. We have three positions to fill with three applicants.
Three positions, three applicants?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's kind of easy. Do we have any motions?
I'll submit that we appoint the three that applied.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint the three applicants. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, there was, I believe there's been more applicants than what we had previously been told. I see on the presentation that there's quite a few more.
Oh, my bad, sorry, I'll withdraw mine.
Okay, the motion's withdrawn. Okay, so, Mirna, right now, we have the three that are there, are District Four, District Four, and District Two, is that correct?
So, on the presentation that they have up right now, I see that we've got one, two, three, four, five...
I'm talking about the ones that are, that are on, that are remaining on the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we've got Mr. Jaime Ibarra for District Four, Ms. Olga Gonzalez from District Two, and Mr. David Diaz is District Four, and he is in...
Okay, so there's no applicants from District One. It looks like we would probably need somebody from District Three. And, okay, that's all. Open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Mr. Cisneros.
We have a motion for, is that supposed to be Gavirian, or is that with, really with an F? Okay, we'll just go with Mr. Cisneros, we have a motion for Mr. Cisneros, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
I don't think I know anyone on this list, so I defer to you, to the rest of my peers.
How many more do we need?
I don't see the second list. For some reason, I just got those first three.
I think it's on the screen. Commissioner Nies.
Commissioner Nies, when we submitted the board template, there were only three applications. I believe that the applications for all boards were kept open until the day before the meeting. So there may have been more that applied after all of the paperwork were submitted to City Secretary.
Well, I will go ahead and nominate Larry Holman.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second for Larry Holman. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. It looks like we would need somebody from... Was that all? Do we get our three?
I think we're missing one, no?
Yeah, I think we still need somebody from District Three. Can we go back to the slide, please? Do we have any nominations for anybody? Now we can bring this up at the next meeting if y'all prefer that.
I would move to table that one so we can see more on the...
Very good. A motion to table. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the last nominationals will be tabled. Thank you.
Next, we have consideration and action on Resolution Number 2020-058 to appoint or reappoint members to the Bronx Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board.
I'd like to nominate Danny Loff.
Did we just appoint him somewhere?
No, that was Larry Loff.
Oh, you're right. You're right. I forget. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for Danny Loff. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I'll make a motion for Edgar Navarro.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have consideration and action on Resolution Number 2020-059 to appoint or reappoint members to the Bronx Public Utilities Board.
I have a favor to ask the Commission. I was looking at this and I'm noticing that there is not a single appointment from District Two. And when I went back and I looked at the applications, the gentleman that applied, I don't know him and I haven't spoken to him. And this is a four-year appointment, so I really, really want to make sure that it's somebody that would represent District Two. So I would ask if we can hold this, because I was even looking... The appointment doesn't expire until next month anyway. So if I could have this table, I would really appreciate it just so that we can find somebody that we all feel comfortable with, but is from District Two. So I would ask if we could table this item. I'll make the motion.
May I ask a question on the previous item? Was it just two appointments? I thought it looked like the whole board needed to be appointed on the Convention and Visitors Bureau?
It was just two.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, we have a motion to table from Commissioner Tetra. Do I have any seconds on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table the item. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, but if we're tabling, that doesn't mean that she's getting this appointment automatically for the next meeting, right?
That's correct.
If anybody finds somebody from District Two, that would be great.
Well, are all the other districts represented?
Yes.
Can we go back to the current role? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands if you're in favor of tabling. Commissioner Nies, are you in favor of tabling?
Nay.
Commissioner Golatsky?
Nay.
Commissioner Cowan?
Nay.
Commissioner Galen?
Nay.
I would have been okay, but... So that's... Then counsel, does that... Does the motion fail? It's 4 to 3?
Yes, I believe he didn't have a second. Oh, I'm sorry, he did have a second, but he fails for not having the plus one.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to nominate Frank Wood.
Did...
I think you're going to point either way. He can... He's served before.
Was Mr. Wood on PUB before?
Is there an application on file?
Yes, he's served on B.C.I.C. and has applied for PUB in the past.
But this list on here are the current applicants, right? Or is that... Or the current members?
On the next...
We do not have a current application for this board at this time for Mr. Wood.
Do... Is it required, counsel?
Yes, there needs to be an application, right?
I just think that's really unfair that District Two is not going to be represented at PUB.
I would move to appoint Patricio Sampaio.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Patricio Sampaio. Commissioner Nies?
Yes.
He's on here?
Yeah, he's there.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I don't see him here. Where is he?
It's on the screen, Commissioner. Below. Those good enough? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against?
Nay.
Commissioner Tetra, Commissioner Mungia?
Aye, yes.
Is that an aye, Commissioner?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Next board appointment is consideration action on Resolution Number 2020-060 to appoint a member to the Charter Review Committee.
Commissioner Tetra, I believe your appointment withdrew.
Yes.
Do you have a nomination for this?
Yes, I'll make the motion to appoint Vito Cardeñas.
Vito Cardeñas?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for Vito Cardeñas. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for Vito Cardeñas. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. This is the first board Vito's ever on?
I think so. He's on another company.
Okay.
Next, we have executive session. Attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.371 Texas Government Code to receive legal advice regarding the city commissions, police privileges, rights, and responsibilities pertaining to the issuance award of a specific franchise license for residential waste management pursuant to the city's general franchise ordinance and applicable state law requirements and to address related legal issues.
I'll move that we go into executive session.
We have a motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Please, Secretary, please note that I am abstaining and I will not be participating in executive session and I will not be voting. I'll be leaving the meeting at this time.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thanks. Have a good day, guys.
Thanks. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will recess executive session. We will recess executive session.